The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the September 3 quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time I'd ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at Agenda Item 1.2, adoption of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
Domine.
A motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to our first quasi judicial public hearing. It's the Phillips Place Town Home. This item was tabled on February 3, 2015, at the council meeting. Is there a motion to remove this item from the table?
Domine.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. An overview of hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And at this time, the council will pause from saying anything or doing anything until that has been completed. Okay, I think everybody's been sworn in that wants to be sworn in for this public hearing. I'll now ask council members if they've had any site visits, like for take communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yurhoff.
I have not, sir.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Mr. France?
No, sir.
I have not. Mr. Smith?
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
I have not.
Alrighty. Based on the disclosures you've heard from our council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium that has been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to any of the council members' participation in this hearing. Seeing none, we'll continue. I'll open the quasi judicial public hearing and recognize Mr. Hales of our staff, who will introduce this item. Mr. Hales?
Thank you, council. As you have indicated, this is a continued public hearing from earlier in the year for Phillips Place Town Homes located on 33.1 acres, identified as Pod 2 in the Phillips Place PDD. Project is located just west of the existing Phillips Place detached residential development. The property is accessed primarily, or only access currently, is from Louis Stevens Drive to the northeast. The currently proposed layout has been modified slightly from what council saw before. The primary difference being that the number of units located in the town home pod has been reduced from 106 units to 99 units. And then, the access proposed for the rest of the development to the south has been changed, which we'll go over in a little more detail in a moment. Because of the changes to the subdivision layout, most of the minor modifications that were identified in the earlier public hearing, there were five, four of those five have been either eliminated by the changes to the subdivision layout, or due to changes to 3.19 of, section 3.19 of the LDO, have been administratively approved by the Planning or Transportation and Facilities Directors. So, mentioned earlier about the change to the access southward for the overall subdivision, if you remember, there was a two-tiered modification request for accessing more than 100 units off a single point of access. The town home development, being the first stage of that, has been reduced to 99 units being accessed off River Pine Drive, which is the stream crossing coming from the existing single-family development. And then you add the existing units in the Phillips Place detached portion, and that was well over 100 units accessed only off Louis Stevens Road. In order to address that concern, they were proposing an emergency access to ribbon-paved, emergency access with a siren-actuated gate at the southern end of Pilot Hill Drive. The revision that is before you tonight is a full rural cross-section collector street with no control of access, so it would be connected southward, extension of Pilot Hill Drive down to Good Hope Church Road. There is one remaining minor modification that was presented to council before, that is a modification to the CTP widening requirements for future McCrimmon Parkway. If you remember, previous hearing, they were proposing a partial payment in lieu for an at-grade crossing of the railroad of the future McCrimmon Parkway. They have now proposed a complete waiver to the requirements of the CTP for future McCrimmon Parkway, partially due to the uncertainty of that actual alignment, that road may shift to the south, whether it's going to go over under the railroad tracks, and to offset some of the costs for the provision of the off-site collector street, the extension of Pilot Hill Drive. And just as a reminder of the alignment of McCrimmon Parkway, this is a missing segment between where it currently terminates at Louis Stevens, and then picks up again on the other side of the railroad tracks on NC 55. That concludes staff's update to the previous hearing, and we'll turn it over to the applicant, and then staff will be back to the podium following the applicant's presentation, any other speakers, to give some professional observations on the changes. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant in this case. Here with me tonight are the same folks who testified on behalf of this application previously. We don't anticipate you guys hearing from them tonight unless you have questions. I believe that the materials that have been submitted essentially encapsulate the modifications that have been made. Kevin's done a great job of covering what those modifications are, but I do want to highlight, in essence, what the big picture result of those modifications are. First, the unit count reduction. Again, there was a, when this case was presented last time, there were six requests for minor modification. A couple of those related to the unit count. There was 106 total units proposed as part of the plan that has been reduced to 99. The result is, where there were previous town homes shown in this location, those town homes have been removed. The reduction from 106 to 99 is an important reduction as it relates to code compliance of this plan. The code requires a, two points of access for any planned development that has 100 or more units. So, the request for modification that was necessary when this case came to you before is no longer necessary as it relates to the town home component of the plan. So, that minor modification request is now gone with the reduction from 106 to 99 units. Additionally, as Kevin noted, we had previously planned for an emergency access associated with this plan. That was an emergency access that had essentially been negotiated with the adjacent property owner to provide for an access that had some gates associated with it. We had extensive conversations with the fire department and the police department to make sure that they were comfortable with that situation, and they were. However, when we were here last time, the council expressed reservations about that as it related to what the future extension would look like, how it was going to be maintained in a multitude of other issues, you know, whether it was going to be permanent or temporary, and how we would control that. So, we went back to the drawing board, sharpened our pencils, and figured out, is there a way to go ahead and make that a permanent access? And we are committing to making that a condition of the plan. I mean, this plan is, in order to move forward, that is going to have to be a permanent public street built to rural collector street standards. The benefit is a few-fold, not the least of which it eliminates the confusion associated with a temporary kind of emergency access. As it relates to code compliance, it resolves a second minor modification. And the minor modification was that previously, with the addition of the 106 town home units, and as Kevin noted, coupled with the existing residential that's been built, a second modification was required the last time we presented this because the only access to the overall development was via Louis Stevens Road. By converting the temporary access to a permanent access, a permanent street access that's built to rural collector standards, based upon the town standards for that, that minor modification now goes away because we have two access points which are sufficient to support the amount of residential development that's being made. So, again, the unit count coupled with the addition of the emergency access, it resolves a couple of key minor modifications that were necessary when you all reviewed this plan previously. With the elimination of the town home units, if you recall, there was units that came down here, and there was essentially a cul-de-sac that butted up against the future McCrimmon Parkway extension, and at least that's where we anticipate it's going to be located. The end result of that previous plan was that in order to fit those units in, it eliminated any future connection to McCrimmon Parkway. And that also required a minor modification. That was the third of the six modifications that was necessary as part of the previous plan. By eliminating those units, they've actually been able to preserve the grading such that a future connection is now possible. So, it's not shown as part of this plan because McCrimmon Parkway is not currently in. We're not exactly sure where McCrimmon is going to end up being. However, because the units have been pulled back and the grading has been changed, the need for modification now goes away because we can, in fact, connect at some point in the future in the event that McCrimmon is located there. So, again, an additional change that benefits the plan from a code compliance standpoint because there is the potential to have a connection in the event that road is stubbed through at that point. As Kevin mentioned, there were two other minor modifications that were granted by the, granted by the staff, or through the planning director and the utilities director, or the facilities director, related to the connection to the north, as well as the connection to the west. So, those are the five of the six minor modifications that have now been resolved with the fine tuning of this plan. Fine tuning that was done to address primarily questions and comments that were raised by you all at the last hearing, which raises, which brings us to the last minor modification that's necessary in order for this plan to be approved, and that is the payment in lieu for the McCrimmon Parkway extension, or McCrimmon Parkway improvements. As noted in the staff report, and as you all might recall, when we were, before you previously, the applicant was requesting to make a $284,000 payment in lieu of making that improvement. The justification that was offered as part of that hearing was that it was questionable whether that connection was ever going to be made in the future, just because we weren't sure if the separate, the grade separated location was going to be in this location or not. That request has subsequently been changed to a full waiver of the payment. The reason why that request has been made is the $284,000 that we were seeking to pay as part of the previous application will now be put to the permanent construction of the access that will be extended down to Green Hope Church Road. As noted in the staff report, the total amount of construction of that permanent road is roughly $800,000. That includes right-of-way acquisition that will be necessary in order to accommodate that. So, the applicant's request essentially is to waive the payment in lieu for a connection that may or may not happen in that location, in order to facilitate the permanent construction and extension of what ultimately will be a collector that benefits the entire area. It will provide a key north-south connection, and is shown on the town's thoroughfare and collector plan. So, with that, that is essentially where we are with this case. That is the, the end result of the work that we've put in over the last four to five months trying to become more code compliant, and trying to address the council's concerns when we were heard the last time. I will reiterate, this is a, this is a great location for this type of use. I mean, obviously, it's zoned, so it is a good location for it. It's buffered on all sides by natural features. I mean, it's essentially an island location for a townhouse development. It sets up well for this type of use, and we believe, not only is it a case that is justified based upon the requirements, the ordinance, but as revised, especially with the, the critical collector street connection being made, we think it's a council, a case that warrants the support from the council. And with that, we would respectfully request you all's approval of the same.
Thank you. Now's the time for other speakers who'd like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Seeing no one will continue, I would invite any cross-examination of what has been said to date. Any cross-examination? No. Alright. We'll now open the hearing for those who are opposed to the request, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Seeing no one will continue. Oh, I'm sorry? I still don't see him.
I came in late, I didn't register.
You have to be sworn in to speak by the town clerk.
I can swear in now.
Thank you. Hi, I'm David Hudson. I'm a resident of the existing Phillips Place development. I have a few concerns about the proposal. One being the, the waiver of the fee. As a taxpayer, I don't feel it's in the best interest of the town to waive that fee. While there is a significant expense in the building of that road, that parcel was rezoned by this council last December, I believe, for a single-family development, and that road would be built anyways by that developer when that time comes. So, I don't think it actually saves the town any money for the developer, although it is a significant expense for them to build that road. I would question whether or not, and it's still possible, to extend, to connect the town home directly to McCrimmon as the grading, if the grading would permit that, as it would likely be a bridge would be required to go over the railroad tracks at that location, unless the, the railroad was gracious enough to grant an at-grade crossing, which I think is unlikely based on experience that the town has had. Second, the, the traffic report that was attached to this submission, I believe is the same traffic report that was submitted last time, and does not take into account the fact that this new road would be existing permanently for public traffic. And that's a larger issue than you can see on this picture that's being displayed, as it creates a new route for traffic to travel between Davis Drive and 55, and that's not addressed as part of the traffic report. I think the traffic report analysis needs to be redone and account for the, the change in the plans. As that new route would allow people to bypass the intersection that's circled on Louis Stevens and McCrimmon, which is noted in that analysis as backing up with traffics specifically during the evening rush hour, and people potentially be able to avoid that by cutting through the subdivision, which is a concern that that has not been analyzed. There was a child hit by a car in the subdivision just a few weeks ago, and not having a traffic analysis of the potential new traffic that could be traveling through the subdivision is a concern for me and other residents. That'll do it. Thanks.
Thank you. This time, I'll, I'll invite any other speakers who'd like to speak in opposition to approach the podium. Seeing no one, I'll invite a cross-examination of the speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I would object to the admission of any traffic information by Mr. Hudson, since he hasn't been established as an expert in the field, which is required by North Carolina law, and I would object to the, to the statement that a child was struck. There's no supporting documentation that's inadmissible hearsay.
Okay. Thank you. This time, I'll call on town staff for any testimony they wish to add.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. There's a pretty exhaustive analysis of the plan's consistency and overall layout with the LDO in regards to the general layout and changes to the layout that addressed the minor modifications that Mr. Barron addressed in his presentation, so I'm not going to go back over that. We'll be available if you have any questions. However, I will call Mr. Jensen of the Transportation and Facilities Department to discuss some staff observations regarding the alignment of the proposed rural collector.
Good evening, council. I just want to make you aware that with this collector road that they are proposing as part of their project, it is on our comprehensive transportation plan. In the alignment, as you see on your screen in dashed yellow, they're deviating a little bit, making an interim-type connection to Good Hope Church Road. But I just want to make you aware that in the future, as the adjacent properties develop, that road will have to be realigned in, in accordance with our CTP, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
And that concludes staff's presentation. Of course, we'll be available following any discussion or during discussion to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Cross-examination of the town witnesses? No? Okay. Now, I'll ask if anyone sworn has any objections to the competency of evidence or testimony. Seeing no one, we'll continue. See, the party believe new evidence presented tonight warrants a continuance of this hearing? No. We'll now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing. Council members, open it up for questions or comments.
Go ahead, Lori. I'll go second.
I just have a couple of questions. Could you explain the detail about a rural cross-section? What is the difference that people will see from Pilot Hill Drive to the Pilot Hill extension?
Pilot Hill Drive, as it exists today, has curb and gutter like a typical subdivision street. This property is within the Carpenter area plan, so therefore, the CTP does allow for a rural cross-section which does not have curb and gutter. It will be a ditch and shoulder section.
And it'll be the same width? Or not?
The right-of-way is slightly larger to accommodate the ditch. However, the road section, the pavement itself, is roughly the same width.
Okay. And so, for, for someone traveling that road, I, well, first off, I thought we changed the rural cross-section in this Carpenter area recently.
You did not in the Carpenter area plan. You did in the southwest area plan. There are small area plans that still have that. That's still being reviewed, and may come back to you on a future date.
It probably needs to come back to us on a future date. You know, if this were to be, this land were to be developed, the developer that has this road on it would then have to come in and build out the road with curb and gutter unless they asked for that waiver, right?
Correct. If, when the property to the south develops, it'll be required to meet the new CTP, as long as there's not the provision that is in there currently, if it's built to an older CTP, it could stay, and I'll let Mr. Jensen expound on that.
Until you, until our comprehensive transportation plan gets changed, where we remove that rural designation, that road could stay as is if someone were to come in and develop today. So, until we change our, our comprehensive transportation plan in the Carpenter area to facilitate curb and gutter, the road would pretty much stay a rural section.
Why did we not change this at the time when we were changing our LDO regarding this? Because we, we changed our standards, and I think we thought we were kind of wiping this problem away across all of our area, and I guess it's a surprise to me, it sounds like a surprise to at least one other person, that we still have this.
I believe the, my memory was that, because the Carpenter area plan had so much history behind it and discussions about keeping it in rural in character, that at the time, we talked about doing an LDO or an amendment to the conference plan, not to discuss that, the elements of the Carpenter plan with, with the southwest area plan. It's just, there's too many complex things going on in that sub-area that, that may need further vetting before you make a decision on whether to eliminate curb or put curb and gutter on.
You know, the problem is, is like, over near the Cary Tennis Center, Louis Stevens Drive was extended, and at that time, I think we all thought that, I wasn't on the council at the time when it was extended, when the vote was to extend it, but probably the council at the time thought that the landowners were going to develop sooner than later, and they put in this rural cross-section, and now we have many, many people every day risking their lives walking on the shoulder of that road. I mean, Lori and I live right near, and then you live pretty close to it too, but I see it every day, and I'm just amazed that someone has not been struck already. I mean, it's just absolutely amazing to me, and I don't want to keep propagating the same problem, you know, putting in a road that we think may be only there for a couple of years, and it ends up being there for 20, 30 years, that has this cross-section that's unsafe.
I do believe that, you know, during the imaginary process, there'll be, I think, a specific discussion about what your desires are in the Carpenter area plan, about whether to go with some sort of curb and gutter sidewalk system or keeping it in the rural cross-section. So, that, that will be, I think, coming forward to you this, this fall.
The Carpenter area plan is, is big. The Carpenter Historic District is smaller, it's encompassed in there, and there are perhaps areas in the Carpenter Historic District where you might want to have a rural cross-section. I don't think that necessarily pertains to this particular road here, but I think to change the Carpenter area in one big swath, we might be losing some of the...
I understand that, but I wouldn't have minded doing this in advance of the imaginary process. I mean, the concern I have is when we have distinctly suburban development occurring, and then you have road standards that are rural road standards connecting, and that's wrong. Yeah, connect, especially where you're connecting curb and gutter, and you're making a new road, it seems like you would do it right, which is also making a curb and gutter. But I totally understand, it's not their problem, they're looking for another access point. There was a mention of a developer already owning this property and coming through with a development. Is there already a plan that's been received?
I'm not aware of any developer proposals on that property. It was rezoned recently to allow a house to be moved onto it, so it's a large single-family lot at the moment. It was just moved, new house has moved onto the lot.
Phillips building there, right?
It's either a building, or he had moved a lot there, unless you have a...
It's just one, it's just one single-family house being built.
It's covered up by the applicant's drawing, but it's sitting roughly in this curve.
But at the end of the day, the reality is that property to the south is going to redevelop, whether that's next year, 10 years, or beyond. I think that getting this road, even just at rural standards, makes improving this road in the future, including in alignment with curb, gutter sidewalks and such, that much easier for a future developer. Like it or not, I mean, I feel like the rules are the rules. They're required or would have to meet rural standards, and that's what they're proposing. I, I look at this, and it's a heck of a lot better than what was proposed last time. That emergency access road that hopefully...
Was attached to this submission, I believe is the same traffic report that was submitted last time and does not take into account the fact that this new road would be existing permanently for public traffic. And that's a larger issue than you can see on this picture that's being displayed as it creates a new route for traffic to travel between Davis Drive and 55, and that's not addressed as part of the traffic report. I think the traffic report analysis needs to be redone and account for the change in the plans. As that new route would allow people to bypass the intersection that's circled on Lewis Stevens and McCrimmon, which is noted in that analysis as backing up with traffics specifically during the evening rush hour. And people potentially be able to avoid that by cutting through the subdivision, which is a concern that that has not been analyzed. There was a child hit by a car in the subdivision just a few weeks ago. And not having a traffic analysis of the potential new traffic that could be traveling through the subdivision is a concern for me and other residents. That'll do it. Thanks.
Thank you. This time I'll invite any other speakers who would like to speak in opposition to approach the podium. Seeing no one, I'll invite a cross-examination of the speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I would object to the admission of any traffic information by Mr. Hudson since he hasn't been established as an expert in the field, which is required by North Carolina law. And I would object to the statement that a child was struck. There's no supporting documentation. That's inadmissible hearsay.
Okay. Thank you. This time I'll call on town staff for any testimony they wish to add.
Thank you, Mayor, and counsel. There's a pretty exhaustive analysis of the plan's consistency and overall layout with the LDO in regards to the general layout and changes to the layout that addressed the minor modifications that Mr. Barron addressed in his presentation, so I'm not going to go back over that. We'll be available if you have any questions. However, I will call Mr. Jensen of the Transportation and Facilities Department to discuss some staff observations regarding the alignment of the proposed rural collector.
Good evening, counsel. I just want to make you aware that with this collector road that they are proposing as part of their project, it is on our comprehensive transportation plan. In the alignment, as you've seen on your screen in dashed yellow, they're deviating a little bit, making an interim-type connection to Good Hope Church Road. But I just want to make you aware that in the future, as the adjacent properties develop, that road will have to be realigned in accordance with our CTP, but I just want to make you aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
And that concludes staff's presentation. Of course, we'll be available following any discussion or during discussion to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Cross-examination of the town witnesses? No? Okay. Now I'll ask if anyone sworn has any objections to the competency of evidence or testimony. Seeing no one, we'll continue. Does either party believe new evidence presented tonight warrants a continuance of this hearing? No. We'll now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing. Council members, open it up for questions or comments.
Go ahead, Lori. I'll go second.
I just have a couple of questions. Could you explain the detail about a rural cross-section? What is the difference that people will see from Pilot Hill Drive to the Pilot Hill Extension?
Pilot Hill Drive, as it exists today, has curb and gutter like a typical subdivision street. This property is within the Carpenter area plan, so therefore, the CTP does allow for a rural cross-section, which does not have curb and gutter. It will be a ditch and shoulder section.
And it'll be the same width? Or not?
The right-of-way is slightly larger to accommodate the ditch. However, the road section, the pavement itself, is roughly the same width.
Okay. And so, for someone traveling that road, well, first off, I thought we changed the rural cross-section in this Carpenter area recently.
You did not in the Carpenter area plan. You did in the Southwest area plan. There are small area plans that still have that. That's still being reviewed and may come back to you on a future date.
It probably needs to come back to us on a future date. You know, if this were to be, this land were to be developed, the developer that has this road on it would then have to come in and build out the road with curb and gutter unless they asked for that waiver, right?
Correct. If, when the property to the south develops, it'll be required to meet the new CTP, as long as there's not the provision that is in there currently. If it's built to an older CTP, it could stay, and I'll let Mr. Jensen expound on that.
Until you, until our comprehensive transportation plan gets changed where we remove that rural designation, that road could stay as is if someone were to come in and develop today. So until we change our comprehensive transportation plan in the Carpenter area to facilitate curb and gutter, the road would pretty much stay a rural section.
Why did we not change this at the time when we were changing our LDO regarding this? Because we changed our standards, and I think we thought we were kind of wiping this problem away across all of our area, and I guess it's a surprise to me, it sounds like a surprise to at least one other person, that we still have this.
I believe the, my memory was that because the Carpenter area plan had so much history behind it and discussions about keeping it rural in character, at the time, we talked about doing an LDO or an amendment to the conference plan, not to discuss that, the elements of the Carpenter plan with the Southwest area plan. It's just, there's too many complex things going on in that sub-area that may need further vetting before you made a decision on whether to eliminate curb or put curb and gutter.
The problem is, is like, over near the Cary Tennis Center, Lewis Stevens Drive was extended, and at that time, I think we all thought that, I wasn't on the council at the time when it was extended, when the vote was to extend it, but probably the council at the time thought that the landowners were going to develop sooner than later, and they put in this rural cross-section, and now we have many, many people every day risking their lives walking on the shoulder of that road. I mean, Lori and I live right near it, and then you live pretty close to it, too, but I see it every day, and I'm just amazed that someone has not been struck already. I mean, it's just absolutely amazing to me, and I don't want to keep propagating the same problem, you know, putting in a road that we think may be only there for a couple of years and it ends up being there for 20, 30 years, that has this cross-section that's unsafe.
I do believe that, you know, during the imaginary process, there'll be, I think, a specific discussion about what your desires are in the Carpenter area plan, about whether to go with some sort of curb and gutter sidewalk system or keeping it in the rural cross-section. So that will be, I think, coming forward to you this fall.
The Carpenter area plan is big. The Carpenter Historic District is smaller. It's encompassed in there, and there are perhaps areas in the Carpenter Historic District where you might want to have a rural cross-section. I don't think that necessarily pertains to this particular road here, but I think to change the Carpenter area in one big swath, we might be losing some of the...
I understand that, but I wouldn't have minded doing this in advance of the imaginary process. I mean, the concern I have is when we have distinctly suburban development occurring, and then you have road standards that are rural road standards.
Connecting...
And that's wrong.
Yeah, connect, especially where you're connecting curb and gutter, and you're making a new road. It seems like you would do it right, which is also making a curb and gutter. But I totally understand. It's not their problem. They're looking for another access point. There was a mention of a developer already owning this property and coming through with a development. Is there already a plan that's been received?
I'm not aware of any development proposals on that property. It was rezoned recently to allow a house to be moved onto it, so it's a large, single-family lot at the moment. It was just moved, new house has moved onto the lot.
Phillips building there, right?
He's either building, or he had moved a lot there, unless you have a...
It's just one, it's just one single-family house being built.
It's covered up by the applicant's drawing, but it's sitting roughly in this curve.
But at the end of the day, the reality is that property to the south is going to redevelop, whether that's next year, 10 years, or beyond. I think that getting this road, even just at rural standards, makes improving this road in the future, including in alignment with curb, gutter sidewalks, and such, that much easier for a future developer. Like it or not, I mean, I feel like the rules are the rules. They're required or would have to meet rural standards, and that's what they're proposing. I look at this, and it's a heck of a lot better than what was proposed last time. That emergency access road that hopefully would open a gate when a siren sounded. This, from a public safety standpoint, makes me feel a lot better. We do get another connection to the neighborhood. I get the request for the waiver for the McCrimmon improvements, given the cost to extend this road and right-of-way acquisition through other people's property. I think it's a better plan than what we saw last time. Is it perfect? No. But I mean, that's just kind of how I look at it.
I'll tell you two little things that kind of stick out to me that are of concern. One of my little pet peeves are these stubs that never go anywhere. They're permanently stubbed. So I look at this, and I say, okay, Mr. Barron said, "may or may not connect." He made that point a couple times. It may or may not connect. So if it does not connect, that means we have a stub sitting there for eternity, looking like it's supposed to do something, and I just think that looks trashy. My preference would be that they don't put the stub there at all. They could put a little sign there still that says "future extension," but just have the curb go smooth. Don't do this, you know, 10 or 12 feet.
You talking about in the townhomes?
Yeah, the townhomes, a little jut right there. Yeah. So I mean, that'd be my first thing. The second thing is, then I think, okay, what happens if we do put McCrimmon through and we want to have that connection? Well, then the taxpayers are picking up the bill for that little segment. At the, I understand them saying, okay, we're putting $800,000 into doing this road, and we don't want to put more money into the McCrimmon Parkway, but it's another thing to say, "We're not going to put any money, payment in lieu for this little extension that the town, you know, the citizens would have to end up paying for in the future, and we're going to want that connection if it's feasible." So I just, I have some consternation over, you know, those little tiny nuances.
And I'd like to follow up on that, just to make sure I'm very clear. That is the reason we're hearing this, that one connection going south. All the other issues have been resolved.
The reason this is before you, today, since it's changed, I mean, it started with you, so you'd have to finish it. But if this were coming in fresh today, you would be seeing it because they're requesting a complete waiver of McCrimmon Parkway, not the connection. The connection is administrated.
So my question, sort of the follow-up, so if this is approved, they're not required to make that connection, is there any history that the town has of going back and connecting to an existing apartment complex to allow them access to a major road?
I would have to defer to Mr. Bailey or Mr. Jensen to answer that question.
Because it just seems, like you said, highly unlikely that that would happen, and what would be the need other than to serve the residents of the townhomes? And so that's why I'm wondering if that would ever happen at all.
You have a policy and a project that in the past has received annual funding to make connections. We've actually made some connections in neighborhoods because they were high priority. Sometimes there were neighborhood requests. In recent years, we have not funded that project because the capital budget was very tight, but we certainly have still have a policy in place to do that. We do that on a priority basis when we have funding, and we bring those requests to council, very similar to the sidewalk requests. We don't rank them quite the same way, but we come and say, "We have all these people that would like these connections. Which one would we like to make with that particular year's annual funding?"
So you made a statement there. I want to follow up on that. All these people that like those requests, so if the apartment, the townhomes, don't want that request, then it's not going to happen.
That's not necessarily true. The town has the ability to make connections if they like to. Just our policy, we consider neighborhood support as part of the ranking when we come back to you, but we could always create a standalone project any day and make that connection if we chose.
Okay.
But that extension was waived administratively? Like having them take that all the way down to their property line was waived administratively? Is that because you're not sure about the topography of future McCrimmon, if it's going to be up high or accreted?
Yeah. That's as close as you could get where the pavement ends. We will need all the rest of that room to make a connection in the future because the topography will change one direction or another. And likely, if we build McCrimmon, we will probably be moving a lot of fill material in or something. We would probably make the connection as a part of that capital project, frankly. But we have, we're a long ways from that. We haven't funded a project there, but that would be a logical time to do it because we would be changing the grades out there a lot, and to leave this little section out would be a little odd at that time.
Is McCrimmon, would that section be state road or Cary road?
It's a major thoroughfare on our thoroughfare plan. Our goal's for all major thoroughfares to be state-maintained roads. After they're constructed, we turn them over after they're open to traffic.
Okay.
And where is McCrimmon, from a timeline perspective, on the transportation plan? Are we talking years? Is it on the plan?
It is not, it's not in the first five years of our capital plan, which has a targeted funding source. If you'll remember, in this year's budget, we changed our capital plan a little bit. So we had a funding range we believed we could meet in the first five years, so it's essentially just planned, is, and in our plan, is all we can really say at this point.
Have you received any money for, let's say, the community right there to the right, to the east? Do they give money for the McCrimmon Parkway? When they...
That segment of the property did not abut. There's a small area of land between there, so it doesn't meet the requirements to require widening.
Okay.
So if we grant the waiver, the payment in lieu, and McCrimmon is built six years or more from now, we're on the hook? Or is there a possibility of another developer coming in here to do something?
We hope there will be some additional development in the area that'll help with some of this, but at least on this little segment, we would not have any other developer. We certainly also hope to see grants because of the crossing of the railroad and some other things, and this developer is paying transportation development fees that fully satisfies their impacts. So we will get funds from the transportation development fees that could be applied towards the improvements. If they would have actually made the improvements, or even sometimes when they make payment in lieu, they get offset, so we can't make them pay twice. So we will receive the full value of the transportation development fees.
Do you all know how many homes right now are being solely served by this road? By the Pilot Hill River Pine up to...
I don't have the exact number, but it's just below 99. It's in the area of 92 or 93 existing, single-family detached homes in the existing portion of Phillips Place.
So it'll double the number of cars going to Lewis Stevens?
It is approximately double the number of units.
With another access.
With another access? Well, if, should this get approved, but, okay.
To Ms. Robinson's comments, not liking the stub, I would disagree. I feel like that sends the message to the residents that this is going to connect one day. I think we have more problems when we cul-de-sac or don't make it look like there's a future connection, and then you try to go in and connect. I think that creates more heartburn in the community. So I kind of like the way they've got it proposed. I appreciate that they've removed the townhomes to the south. That actually allows for that connection if and when McCrimmon is constructed. I understand not wanting to take that stub too far south, given that we don't exactly know how McCrimmon is going to go through there, or what the topography or lay of the land may be, but I do think it sends a clear message to the community there that there will be a connection at a future date. The reminder on the transportation development fees was helpful, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that most of the other waivers have been satisfied administratively for some of the changes. This is a difficult parcel. I mean, like you, I forget who said it, but it is kind of like an island. And I think they've made a lot of effort to make it as good a project as they can. So...
I would agree with you on the stub. If I had a high assurance that the road was really going to go through there in such a way that could be connected, but if there's a high likelihood, the way McCrimmon is built, that we can't make that connection, then I'd really prefer for it not to have a stub.
I would think we could make the connection. It just might be one of those right-in, right-out only, it might, you know? But I don't see making the connection make it...
Staff thinks with the grades, there's a high likelihood we'd be able to connect.
If you recall in the staff report, and Mr. Barron mentioned it in his presentation as well, they eliminated the units that were along that stub. Originally, there were units proposed along there, which, once the units are there, you can't change the grade. Eliminating those units, they've provided as much flexibility as possible. They've changed the grading at that end of the site to prepare as much as possible for a future grade-separated crossing of McCrimmon.
Are there comments or questions? I see none that would make us ready for the motion or request, modification A.
I make a motion to approve modification request. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Discussion.
I do think that one of the issues that I have right now is, you know, the no payment in lieu, the reduction of that. I do think that there is an equity issue that, and a responsibility to the taxpayers, even though we might not have a planned, funded plan for McCrimmon, we will at some point, I would rather have some sort of escrow or some sort of guarantee that they will contribute to it, just like every other developer has contributed to our roads. And I know that they are providing that extra access, and I appreciate that. I don't know what the difference is between the cost of that extra access, but even though it's there, it's not built to the standard that we would want in the future. If it was completed, if it was the road that was going to be there for the future, and it wouldn't be touched, and it was aligned correctly, then I could take that as a fair and equitable commitment, but every other developer has paid their fair share. And so I have an equity issue with that. I don't know how I'm going to vote. I'm just putting that out there.
And based on your comment, I thought I heard $800,000 for the road they're proposing, and $200,000 if they went the way they were proposing before, the payment in lieu.
Clarify really quickly, that $245,000 was a partial payment in lieu for an at-grade crossing of McCrimmon Parkway.
Okay.
There was approximately, in the last staff report, $1.1 million difference between the $245,000 for an at-grade and the cost of a grade separated, because of the bridge and the grading and everything else.
I can't get my arms around that either. I, because they're putting in the new road, we don't have the money, we don't want to put the money in to, you know, widen the other one. It's like, you know, I tell my mortgage company, "I can't pay my mortgage this month because I had to buy a new car," and I can't make the connection between those two. Both things are necessary, and I'm going to have to vote no on the modification. I'm pretty much okay with the site plan, the way it is now, with all the other changes and whatnot that have gone on, but I can't support the modification for the complete waiver.
I just don't see how you can ever get a development on this property that could be financially viable and be able to help pay for that bridge. So you either...
Maybe that's the case.
Get this and the road connection to Pilot Hill Drive, which provides a benefit, or you say no, and you get no development, and you get none of it.
You get no tax revenue, which you're going to generate for a period of time.
Yeah. But that's not for us to...
No, I understand, but it's a matter of, I guess you call it the pursuit of perfect. I mean, I think you set it down that, you know, it's not, it's not everything I'd like to see. It's not perfect, but it's pretty darn good. And, you know, having that tax base and that revenue, that all helps contribute to the area. And, you know, I don't know if there's a middle ground on that, you know, I don't know. I kind of struggle. I mean, I understand the point. It's one of those things where my pain threshold of just how much, with all the other improvements and all the other things done, do we want to take that risk of not having that development there and, you know, for this payment in lieu? So it's like you, Lori, I mean, it's like, I'm not saying yes or no, but I'm struggling with this feedback and trying to figure out what's fair and reasonable. And I think it might be just stretching it a little bit too much to expect that payment in lieu.
So I'm also weighing, I want to ask you again and make sure I understand. 245 to 1.4 is the range we're looking at for that connection. Is that correct?
Correct. If you look on the staff observations in the staff report under this minor modification, you'll see a bullet that talks about the applicant's engineer estimate for the grade separated crossing was $1.4 million, and they were proposing at the last hearing a payment in lieu in the amount of $285,000 for an at-grade crossing. So they were doing a partial payment in lieu of an at-grade crossing in lieu of paying the much larger amount for the grade separate.
And if they had one more townhome, then they would have to have two access points, and that would be a total game changer.
Correct. There would be a minor modification required once it exceeds 100 units, or gets to 100 units, 100 units or more.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion fails four to two. Mr. Silverstein, unlike regular council meetings, we do need a motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
I think you have...
Do I have to read the whole thing?
Yes.
That's right. So for the reasons discussed, I move that we deny the modification request made by the applicant, as it does not meet all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
For denial.
For denial.
For denial. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask, just to get clarity for the record, in that motion, we really kind of asked you all to make two decisions. The waiver is both for waiver of construction and then waiver of payment in lieu. So what I heard you all just vote on was that you didn't want to waive the payment in lieu. Just to clarify for the record, and if Mr. Silverstein and Mr. Barron don't object, to get you all to pass on the issue of whether you would grant a waiver for the construction of McCrimmon Parkway. Do you understand?
Yes.
What I'm asking? Okay.
Do we need a motion before we can discuss that?
No.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think you do. I think that you can, you can make it in two motions, if you'd like to do it that way. You can informally reconsider.
Okay.
If I can make a motion that we approve the request for a waiver to construct McCrimmon Parkway? Okay, I make that as a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
As long as you have payment in lieu. I totally agree with that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two. Now we have a sub...
Did they understand the motion?
The motion was to allow them, a waiver of not construct...
Waive construction of McCrimmon Parkway, so that they would not have to construct McCrimmon Parkway.
To allow them to. And you voted, okay.
Right. So now we have a, still a question of a subdivision site plan. We still vote on that, even though the access points are not there? Well, they have access, I guess, to the...
Well, so you're voting now on the sixth criteria for site plan approval. The first criteria is, does the plan comply with the LDO and other documents? And you view that in light of whether requested modifications were granted. So their plan that's in front of you is a plan to not construct and not provide a payment in lieu from McCrimmon, and you all just voted against allowing them to not provide the payment in lieu. So now you look at the site plan as a whole to see if they met the sixth criteria, including the first criteria about complying with the LDO.
So I'll make a motion to approve this site plan for the reasons discussed.
Do you mean to say to deny the site plan because it didn't meet the first?
You cannot do one and the other? Thanks.
So we're entering potentially confusing territory. So we're entering potentially confusing territory.
I don't understand what the issue with the site plan is. The issue seemed to be the waiver of the $285,000 for the payment in lieu.
Well, so I think we may need to talk about a couple of things. If you approve the site plan-
Then they don't meet the LDO.
Well, you could still approve the site plan, but you haven't granted the modification. So they would, I think we'd have to add a condition that they show a plan that either shows the connection to McCrimmon or provides for a payment in lieu. So I think we'd have to add-
We'd ask them to pay in lieu administratively.
Press the fact that they haven't met the LDO with-
No, no, no. What you'd want to do is you'd say, yes, we approve the site plan with the condition that they will pay the payment in lieu from McCrimmon. Correct?
So you could deny the site plan or you could approve it with the condition that they pay the payment in lieu. And then we'd need to address what that payment in lieu amount is.
Let me ask Lisa, if you've denied the minor modification, the council denied the minor modification, why do they have to put a condition on the approval of the site plan? There is no minor modification, so they have to comply with that part of the LDO.
I would just want it in the record to be clear. That would just be a clarification, I think.
We would need to clarify the amount of the payment in lieu. Was it $285,000 a partial payment in lieu? Were you requiring a 1.4 million?
Well, it's something that you'd either have to do administratively or you may have to come back here with that part of the request.
And Mr. Barron, I think, would like to speak about his, we'll let him get his interpretation in as well.
In my opinion, Mr. Silverstein, I mean, our plan as a whole includes a request for a payment in lieu. I mean, the only way that construction, according to our plan, the only way construction of that permanent connection can occur is if there is a payment in lieu associated with it. Now, if you all are inclined to say, yeah, we feel good about the plan, we're going to improve the plan, you're inclined to do that. And you can approve it with a condition, but you're approving a plan that's going to sit on the shelf and gather dust because there's no way that plan is going to come to fruition because there's no way this developer or any other developer will afford $140,000 per unit in order to pay a $1.4 million connection. So if, again, I think you all are inclined to do that, but just be real clear, our plan as proposed includes a payment in lieu that for me, I can't separate the two because it's all one big plan.
Can we get a motion?
I'm even more confused now.
So he's basically saying it's-
I get that. He doesn't want it approved. Or what's the point of approving it if it's never going to get built? I get that. I'm hearing, but it includes a payment in lieu.
Correct. I believe he meant, misspoke. He meant to say it does not include a payment in lieu.
With a payment.
There's no payment in lieu offered by the applicant.
Got it. I don't know why we would approve it. I mean, you can prove it if you want to. It's never going to get built.
The only reason that you'd approve it is if you thought, if we specified in there that we would accept, we approve it on the condition that they pay a payment in lieu of 285,000. And then at some point, if they didn't want to develop it, they found some buyer who wanted to build the site plan according to, it's been ironed out and wants to pay the payment in lieu. And then that person could go and develop it. But if they don't think that's likely, we can just deny it here and see what happens in the future.
And I agree. I think it's just simpler to deny it.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we deny the proposed site plan as it does not meet all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2L of the LDO.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion.
So the argument is the site plan does not meet the LDO because of a payment in lieu?
And the payment in lieu, I'm confused.
I don't understand how a payment in lieu is tied to a site plan.
Were the regular ones.
Well, we don't know.
We didn't specify.
We, it's in a range and the top end of that range is 1.4 million, the lower end.
But we could approve with a fixed amount, so it would be on regular.
Exactly. Absolutely.
That's what you're saying.
That's what I was saying.
That's why I wouldn't want to deny.
But the applicant said realistically that if you go toward that high end, you add basically $140,000 each unit, and that's just not financially doable.
Right. And I'm saying we don't go to that high end. You know, I say we stay at the 285 for a regular crossing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I clarify? What I'm hearing from the folks who made the motion and seconded it is that you would be denying the plan because it does not comply with the LDO, specifically the requirement, which is Section 8.1.5A, that requires either construction or a payment in lieu of improvements.
And is that your understanding?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Yerha? Yes. That is the intent and the understanding. Further discussion or comment, we have a motion.
Do we need to put a dollar number on that?
Well, not with the deny.
If we do deny, we don't need to.
But if the deny fails and we come up with another motion.
We could approve the site plan and say a fixed amount for their payment in lieu. So that way they could move forward if they wanted to pay that payment in lieu. I don't know if there's any disadvantage as far as tax purposes or anything. I don't understand these, you know, the business side of this, but if we approve it, is there any disadvantage to the applicant at all, the owner?
Tell me to approve the site plan?
Yeah.
Procedurally, there's no, and I don't want to speak for the applicant, but there's no reason for the applicant to continue forward with the approval process. So if you approve it with a condition, my guess is they will either withdraw it or allow it to lapse and review after 90 days. And then it would go away and would start over.
So it's irrelevant?
Because of 90 days, if we come up with an amount that is consistent with not the grade separated, we went with the lower amount.
I'm keeping my motion.
So any other comments, questions?
Can I hear the motion again, please?
Motion is to deny based on the lack of waiver.
Lack of compliance with LDO Section 8.1.5A.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two. And that, Mr. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'll close this public hearing.
I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right, we'll close this public hearing. We now move to our next quasi judicial public hearing. It's a quasi judicial hearing on mom's auto care. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who'd like to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. We'll pause for a moment to allow those who would like to speak to approach Ms. Johnson and receive their oaths, and the council will pause until that has been completed. Wow, a bunch of people for this one. I'll now ask council members for any site visits, exportation, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my right, Ms. Robinson.
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
I have none. Mr. France?
Nope.
Ms. Bush?
No, sir.
Mr. Yerha? All right, very good. Based on the disclosures we've heard from the council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium who's been sworn to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, we'll proceed and open the quasi judicial public hearing and recognize Mr. Loveland of our staff who will introduce the hearing.
Good evening, council. This is a request by Camilla Investments LLC for approval of a site plan for redevelopment of a half acre property located on the intersection of Tyrone Road and Jones Franklin Road. The proposal includes a few minor modification requests to the town's development standards. He proposed use as a light vehicular service use. Project is located adjacent to Tryon Road, which is to the north, Jones Franklin Road, which is to the west of the site. There's a boat designated as thoroughfares on the comprehensive transportation plan. Campbell Road is to the east and Old Holly Springs Road orders the site to the south. That is a local road. The land uses in the vicinity of the site are all commercial. One exception to that is to the northwest. On the northwest corner of the intersection, there's a church use. The zoning on the site is general commercial, GC. That zoning, excuse me, does allow the light vehicular service use that is proposed. The existing property has an abandoned or vacant building located on the site. That building will be demolished as part of the applicant's proposal. The site is relatively clear of existing vegetation. There is one understory tree in the corner of the property. Property is fairly flat, has a very gentle slope from north to south, from east to west. The applicant is proposing a 2,168 square foot building that's located in the northwest corner of the site. Is proposing eight parking spots in the vehicular service area. That is the required number of parking for the use and for that size of the building. Vehicular access to the site will be via two driveways on Old Holly Springs Road, both of which are one-way. There is a one-way traffic circulation pattern on the property. There is no other access to the property. The applicant is removing the existing driveway to Tryon Road. There is an existing sidewalk on Tryon Road. The applicant is proposing sidewalks on the three other frontages and will provide pedestrian access from Tryon Road to the north and from Old Holly Springs Road to the south. The building will be faced with brick on all four elevations, hanging a red brick on top of a cream colored brick base. There are a few architectural, two architectural bands of rolock brick that encircle all four facades that are same cream colored brick, some concrete medallions on three of the facades. You can see on the front facade, which is the top facade in this drawing, the three service bay doors, which are glass doors. There's a glass storefront, smaller storefront to the right of that. The rear facade, which is on the bottom of this drawing, notice the three large windows, those are directly opposite the service bay doors on the front. The applicant is requesting modifications with this request, essentially two modifications, one being a reduction to the streetscape widths on three sides of the property, the second being a reduction of the building setbacks on two sides. Along Tryon Road and along Jones Franklin Road, there is a requirement for a 30-foot wide streetscape. That's A1 and A2. Along Old Holly Springs Road, which is a local street, there is a requirement for a 15-foot streetscape. The applicant is proposing 10-foot widths along all these streets. We'll note that staff has suggested a consideration of condition of approval that would require the standard streetscape widths for the eastern portion of the site or the portion of the site that's east of the trash enclosure, trash enclosure being right here. So in effect, the areas highlighted in red on this drawing would be the areas that are received relief from their modification request. The second modification request is reduction of the building setbacks. There is a 30-foot building setback requirement from the right of way of Tryon Road and from the right of way of Jones Franklin Road. That was the same width, of course, of the streetscape. They're similarly requesting the reduction down to 10 feet. That concludes staff's initial presentation, and I'll return to present the staff's processional observations after the applicant and public has presented their testimony.
Thank you. This time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Mayor Weinberg, members of the council, staff, Mr. Silverstein, I'm Bob Brady, Council for Camilla Investments LLC, requesting the site plan approval tonight with the modifications as delineated by Mr. Loveland. I've asked Mr. Loveland to put this shot back on the screen because this, I think, probably epitomizes the difficulty of this site to work with. About a half acre of land, we're putting a 2,168 square foot structure on it. In order for this site to work, we think at all, there will have to be modifications from setbacks. And we feel like the setbacks reductions that we're asking are reasonable. What exists on this site right now, I pass by two times a day, every day of my life. It is an eyesore. This is not, this is not a structure that Kerry wants to see on a main thoroughfare in or around Kerry. That property has sat derelict for years. Once the convenience store shut down, it now has graffiti, and I have personally, unfortunately, run over rats that have departed that site, going to more safer havens. Not a pleasant location. In order to approve this, there are certain showings that the applicant has to make. And to be short, I would like to call three witnesses. The folks that I have here tonight are the owner, Mr. Kamal Qodora, who is the single member owner of Camilla Investments LLC. I want to call, however, the site engineer, Ray Watson. I want to call Robert Birch, who is our appraiser, and I want to call Frank Price, who is our traffic engineer. Having said that, I'll call first, Mr. Ray Watson. If you would kindly state your name, please.
My full name is Norman Ray Watson, Jr.
And Mr. Watson, would you kindly tell council what you do for a living?
I am a civil engineer. I am a graduate of North Carolina State University with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and master's degree in transportation engineering with a minor of political, public administration. I am a registered professional engineer in 22 states, including North Carolina. I originally worked for a consulting firm in Houston, Texas, doing land development work. Spent 16 years working for Hardee's Food Systems, doing restaurant development. Worked for a consulting firm in RTP. Self-employed for six years and recently joined a consulting firm doing land development work. Most of what I have done my entire professional career is two acre or less developments of commercial property.
And I take it, Mr. Watson, that you are the designer of this site?
Yes, I am the designer of the site plan.
Mr. Watson, are you familiar with the town's LDO, the Land Development Ordinance, specifically Development Design Standards of Chapters Seven and Eight, as well as the Dedication and Improvements provisions of Chapter Eight, as well as all other applicable town specifications?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the site plan approval application that you have drafted this before the council tonight?
Yes, I am.
Will the reduction in the required streetscape widths that are requested for this site plan approval advance the goals and purposes of the ordinance?
In my opinion, yes, it will.
And will the reduction of the required streetscape widths result in less visual impact or more effective environmental or open space preservation or relieve practical difficulties in developing this site?
Yes, it will.
So this is a difficult site?
This is a difficult site.
Will the reduction of the required setbacks from adjacent roadways advance the goals and purposes of the ordinance?
In my opinion, yes, it will.
And will the reduction in the required- And will the reduction in the required setbacks from adjacent roadways result in less visual impact or more effective environmental or open space preservation, or relieve practical difficulties in developing the site?
Yes, it will.
Is it your professional opinion that the site plan meets or exceeds the requirements of the town's land development ordinance?
Yes, it's my opinion. It meets the town's development ordinance.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all right.
Is it your professional opinion that the site plan conforms to the comprehensive plan and other official plans, manuals, and documents adopted by the town?
Yes, it is.
Does the property front on a thoroughfare or a collective roadway?
Yes, it does.
Are we requesting any access on that thoroughfare?
No, we are not.
Is it your professional opinion that the site development plan will not materially endanger the public health or safety?
Yes, that is correct.
Is its proposed use and development necessary to provide essential service to the community?
Yes, it is.
Is it your professional opinion that the proposed use and development plan is in harmony with the scale, bulk, coverage, density, and character of the area in which it is located?
Yes, it is.
Is its proposed use approximately located with respect to transportation facilities, water supply, fire, and police protection, waste disposal, and similar facilities?
Yes, it is.
Is it your professional opinion that the proposed use will not cause undue congestion or create traffic hazards or unsafe pedestrian pathways?
Yes, it is.
At this point, I'd like to tender Mr. Watson as an expert in his field, and I have no further questions of Mr. Watson at this point.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Not at this point.
Thank you. At this point, the applicant would call Robert Birch. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Robert Michael Birch.
And, Mr. Birch, would you kindly let the council have your qualifications or professional qualifications?
I'm a NC State certified residential and commercial real estate appraiser. I hold a SRA designation from the Appraisal Institute. Aside from that, I have a general contractor's license and a North Carolina real estate broker's license.
Are you familiar with the site development plan applications for council tonight?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the general vicinity and the location of this property?
Yes.
And does your familiarity with both the request and the area provide you with sufficient basis to render your professional opinion as to the impact on property values?
Yes.
Is it your professional opinion that the site plan will adequately protect other properties or uses from the potential adverse effects of the proposed development?
Yes.
Is it your professional opinion that the plan will provide harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties?
Yes.
I have no further questions of Mr. Birch.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd call Mr. Frank Price. Mr. Price is our traffic engineer.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I will have to swear in this witness.
Mr. Price? You can do another one.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
While Mr. Price is doing that, I might point out that it appears to me that the location of the structure on that site right now probably is closer than 10 feet to the right-of-way. It appears to be certainly noncompliant at this point. As one who passes it frankly, I'm anxious to see something else on that location. And in the interest of the rat population of the county. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Frank Lenard Price. I'm known more generally as Frank.
And Frank, if you don't mind, could you give the council your professional qualifications?
I'm a professional engineer and land safety surveyor in North Carolina. Previously, I had, was registered in a number of southeastern states. I'm a NC State graduate, both bachelor and master's degree. I've done graduate work at Georgia Tech in urban and regional planning and at Ole Miss in Oxford, Mississippi in engineering management. I've 31 years with NC State, with the NC Department of Transportation. I've had 20 years in private practice with, more recently, with weather roll engineering where I'm the senior transportation engineer.
At this point, I'd tender Mr. Price as an expert in his field. Mr. Price, with regard to the site development plan that's in front of the council this evening, are you familiar with that site plan application?
Yes, sir. I'm familiar with the site plan application.
Is it your professional opinion, in your professional opinion, does the plan provide safe conditions for pedestrians or motorists and prevent a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways?
Yes, it does.
In your professional opinion, does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site?
Yes, it does.
And in your professional opinion, does the plan provide traffic mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project?
Completely. The access, the ingress and egress on the old Holly Springs Road is quite a bit safer than the original access, which is still a curb cut to on Tryon Road.
I have no further questions of Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, sir. If I fail to do this, I would tender Mr. Birch as an expert witness in his field as well. That concludes the applicant's evidence. I would suggest and request that this site plan application be approved. And it's not simply a matter of what you're getting is better than what you've got. When I take a look at what Mr. Qodora proposes for this site, it seems to me to be a win-win situation for, actually, a win-win-win situation. He's bringing a handsome facility to a site to replace a derelict facility. He's bringing job opportunities, maybe not a huge number of job opportunities, but job opportunities to folks to work at that site. He is bringing a tax base increase for the town that I'm sure the town would hardly enjoy. And he's bringing a service to the people that I feel like the people need and want in this area. This site plan does everything in this world that I think needs to be done for this site, and I would ask this council to unanimously approve this application.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in, who would like to speak in support of the application, to approach the podium and invite the first speaker forward. Is there anyone? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll invite cross-examination of the witnesses who have testified in support of the request. Nope. We'll open, oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Good evening, council members. My name's Allison Cooper. I'm an attorney with Bailey and Dixon in Raleigh, and I represent neighboring property owners, the Gunthers, who own the property to the south of this one. If I could go back to slide, I think it was 37. So, you can see their lot. They are actually out parcel number one on Exhibit B that's in your packet tonight. Their property is there, fronts Jones Franklin Road, and you can see their parking lot there to the, yeah, to the southwest there. We are here tonight because they have many concerns regarding this proposed site plan. And in the interest of time, I know some of you probably want to get home and see a couple ACC football games that are on TV right now, if you're like me. I just want to forecast for you that the criteria that they will be testifying to, it will not be related to traffic impacts, but I do want to cross-examine the expert witnesses that have been tendered here tonight on the traffic impacts that we do have concerns with. So, at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Price to come down, and I can ask him some questions. Hi, Mr. Price. We did not have the ability to see the traffic study that I think is referenced in the applicant's application in the packet here, but if you could just summarize, I guess, what your analysis entailed, how many, like, car volume or increases in traffic that would be accompanied by this development, that would be helpful.
I was asked to do a traffic assessment, not a traffic impact study, but a traffic assessment, which I did, and it was submitted in April of 2014. The traffic, we did counts from 6:30 in the morning till 9 o'clock and from 4 o'clock till 6:30, which is what the town of Cary likes to see. And this type facility generates relatively a small amount of traffic during the peak hour, which is a concern. The main concern is during the peak hour. This is a business that's open all day, so their trips into and out of the facility are spread out during the day rather than concentrated during the peak hour time. And as far as the actual number of trips, there'll be 80 trips generated in the 24-hour time period, according to the Traffic Generation Manual of Institute of Traffic Engineers. By the way, I'm a fellow and life member of that organization and have been all my career. Not fellow in life, all my career, but I've been part of that organization, that professional organization. During the peak hour, there'll be a total of six trips in the morning, four entering and two exiting, and in the PM, there will be a total of 10 with six exiting and four entering.
Okay. Mr. Price, along those lines, what are the, the only access into the site will be off of Old Holly Springs Road? Is that correct?
That is correct, and we discussed the access points on Old Holly Springs Road, and I concurred with the site plan development that a one-way driveway would be much safer, primarily because of vehicles backing out of the bays. If it was a one-way operation, they only had to be concerned with traffic to their right, and nobody would be coming in behind them.
Okay. An entry onto Old Holly Springs Road, coming, if a traveler was coming south on Jones Franklin Road, would they be able to make a left-hand turn onto Old Holly Springs Road from Jones Franklin Road?
There's nothing there now to prevent it. However, during the, during peak hours, that turn may be, the queue may back up beyond that intersection, but they can make a left turn at Tryon Road, a right turn at Campbell Road, and a right turn into the development.
Right. But a traveler would not be able to make a left-hand turn off of James Franklin Road onto Old Holly Springs Road as it is currently planned and as it currently exists because there's a traffic island, isn't that correct, at the intersection of James Franklin Road and Old Holly Springs Road?
It's painted. It's painted. It's not, not solid. They can certainly make a left-hand turn there if the queue is not backed up.
I believe, and I have gone out to the site and just went out this week, there is a traffic island that is sitting right there at James Franklin Road and the intersection of James Franklin and Old Holly Springs Road that would prevent a car traveling south down James Franklin Road to making that left-hand turn because of the location of the traffic island.
Well, if there is, I can't argue with you for today, but it certainly wasn't one in April of 2014.
Okay. So, along those lines, my questioning would be how someone traveling down Jones Franklin Road, traveling south, would be able to get to Old Holly Springs Road? And it's my understanding they would have to come south and make a U-turn or either make a left-hand turn into the Swift Creek Shopping Center and turn around to go north on James Franklin and make that right-hand turn into Old Holly Springs Road?
If there's a barrier there, then yes, they would not be able to make a left-hand turn. They would have to proceed south. My guess would be that they would enter the shopping center and drive through the shopping center to Campbell Road and then go north to make a turn into Old Holly Springs Road. But, you know, how people get to things, as I stated before, the preferable way to get there would be to make the left turn and with protected left turn movement at Tryon Road, go down Tryon Road to Campbell Road, make right, two right turns, and come back to the entrance.
Okay. And I think you just said that a traveler can make a left-hand turn off of Campbell Road onto Old Holly Springs Road, or did I misunderstand?
Left turn on Campbell?
A left-hand turn off of Campbell Road onto Holly Springs Road as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's my understanding, too, that there's a median in the middle of Campbell Road right now that would prevent that left-hand turn. Are there any proposed traffic improvements or turn lanes associated with this project as it's currently before town council?
No, ma'am.
Along Campbell Road or James Franklin Road?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
None were deemed necessary. Both intersections were analyzed using Synchro 7, and they operated very nicely, with the exception of peak periods when the traffic queuing might occur from the traffic signal at Tryon Road and Jones Franklin.
Okay. Mr. Price, is it your understanding whether or not there has been any arrangement with the owners or of the out parcels located there in the Swift Creek Shopping Center as to whether or not their shopping center could be used for overflow parking or traffic associated with this development?
I have no knowledge of such.
I don't have any further questions?
Parking spaces were provided that met the town's requirements, so it shouldn't be any need for overflow parking.
I don't have any further questions of this witness. At this time, I would ask for Mr., I believe it was Mr. Watson, to come forward. I have a couple of questions for him. Hi, Mr. Watson. My questions for you are going to be related to the, both the parking as well as the adverse effects from this proposed development. Is it true that in connection with this site plan application, there will be some disruptions to the current streetscape landscaping that is there in front of James Franklin Road and out parcel one that's depicted on the cover of the site plan?
Yes. The sanitary sewer service is south along Jones Franklin Road, and the route of the sanitary sewer will be within the right-of-way of Jones Franklin Road.
Okay.
And the sewer plan calls for replanning per town staff approval.
And what will be eliminated, what would be removed as far as the landscaping as a result of those improvements?
The street trees within the right-of-way for the installation of the sanitary sewer.
Okay. And approximately how many trees are we talking about there?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Is there also a sidewalk there that would be removed temporarily?
Sidewalk, the boring will be boring under the road. There may be some isolated sidewalk removal as part of the construction.
Okay. Given that this, and we appreciate that this lot does have development restrictions, given that it's small in nature and it's abutting, three thoroughfares, basically, and looking at the proposed parking associated with this use, was there any analysis given as to the number of employees that would be expected to park here on a daily basis?
The maximum of three employees on a daily basis, and also a bicycle space provided recommendation of staff inside the building for employees.
Okay. So, it would be your testimony that all the employees will be parking there on-site? There will not be any off-site parking along Old Holly Springs Road?
I have no knowledge of that, no.
Okay. So, there are a total of seven parking spaces with one?
I believe there's eight, yes, eight total.
So, eight total, okay. My last question is related to the stormwater system that's currently in place. I did see in the currently in place. I did see in the application that there are currently no improvements that are being recommended to the stormwater system, and it's noted in the notes that the impervious area is not being increased, and that's based on an aerial photo from 1988. And I was just curious as to why in 1988 aerial photograph was used as opposed to a more recent?
At our pre-submitting meeting, that was the criteria the town told me that they based it off of.
Okay. Are you aware that the town actually acquired road frontage through a condemnation on Tryon Road in 2006, and so this lot may be different in size?
What we based that on was on the current boundaries for the impervious area, so yes, I am aware.
Okay. Do you, you don't anticipate any new runoff of stormwater from this site as a result of the?
No, we've actually proposed catch basins at the driveway that will tie into the pipe. That will be the intersection of Jones Franklin and Old Holly Springs Road that will tie into the existing storm sewer system.
Okay. I don't have any further questions of this witness. And I would like to call Mr. Birch and just ask him one question regarding the impact on neighboring property values. Mr. Birch?
Hi, Mr. Birch. My one question is, I believe you testified earlier that there will not be any impact on neighboring property owners' values. Would you disagree, or would you agree that landscaping, removal of landscaping and a disruptance of a streetscape would potentially impact a neighboring property owner's?
I wouldn't say.
You wouldn't think so? Okay. And then potential stormwater runoff associated with that, would you agree that that could?
I'm not qualified to.
Okay. I don't have any further questions of this witness. And I'm done as far as my cross-examination, but I would like to reserve the opportunity for Mr. Gunther to testify before you tonight as to the other three development criteria that we feel very strongly that you should consider in addition to what's already been testified to, not traffic-related, but some other impacts associated with his property.
Based on my information, that's what's coming up next. We'll invite those who are opposed to the request to approach the podium. I don't know if you want to stay.
Okay. Mr. Gunther.
Okay. And just in some preliminary comments, we understand the limitations under the rules and that he's not allowed to testify as to the expected traffic impact. So, our testimony and focus here will be on criteria number one, two, and three, primarily two and three, as to whether or not there are any adverse effects on his property and whether or not this plan is harmonious with the neighboring development. Mr. Gunther, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Glenn Thomas Gunther, and I'm at 2817 Jones Franklin Road.
Okay. Mr. Gunther, as a condition to approval of the development of your lot, were there building setback requirements that were imposed by the town at the time?
There is. My building is approximately 50 feet setback from the right-of-way of Jones Franklin Road.
Okay. And did you also have streetscape improvements that?
We do. We have it basically all four sides of the property, but in regards to Jones Franklin, facing Jones Franklin Road, we have approximately 50 feet of matured trees and bushes, shrubs.
Okay. And I have exhibits if council would like to see an aerial of that. We can just pass that out.
And just so you know, the exhibit, the first is just a current aerial photograph of Mr. Gunther's property, which is 2817 James Franklin Road. The second attachment is the actual site and utility plan that was approved by the town, it looks like back in 2001, for this development that includes the streetscape requirements on this plot as well as the building setback requirements. Mr. Gunther, in your opinion, will there be an impact on your property given the current proposed development of the applicant's site plan?
Well, speaking as a non-expert, I do believe it will have negative impacts on me, as negative impacts have occurred to me in the past in relationship to this particular site. Would you like me to?
Yeah. Do you have concerns related to this, the removal of trees in front of your property?
I do, and that kind of fortifies my initial and greatest concern. The trees in question, two of them are basically right in the front of my business to Jones Franklin Road. The particular grading of this area is of my greatest concern. When these trees are removed, if the proper proceeding, procedures are not put in place to retain runoff, I can personally guarantee you my business is and will be in fact compromised due to this, as it has already in the past. Again, due to heavy rainwater and grade area, my lot commonly floods, and basically I have, we have had to make improvements to the parking lot to handle the large amount of running water during a heavy rainstorm, which goes right into my stormwater drain, and then, if I'm not mistaken, is routinely inspected by the town of Cary for any kind of contaminants, thus bringing another concern of mine in regards to any kind of current testing. Again, it's not a measure of my particular lot by itself. I get extreme runoff by the uphill site, this being in question.
Okay. And could you explain the improvements that you've made to catch some of that stormwater that you believe is coming?
Sure. On the inner parameter of my lot there, and to the curb, so between the curb and the shrubs there, I've installed and maintained a small metal landscaping retaining slat, so to speak, and it requires continuous maintenance of removing the silt that adds up over time. So, really, any change at all, one little thing missed is going to directly impact me. And again, I do have experience in the past where this has been an issue.
And if you could just explain for council the impact associated with, I believe there were test wells that were?
Yes.
Installed that are related to the prior use of 5757 Tryon Road, which is the applicant's property?
Yes, thank you. This is really a perfect example of my concern. This particular site, and again, I know I don't want to speak out of line as a non-expert, but I am well aware that the site is contaminated. There are test wells on the property. I was not made aware of that until my phone line was cut one day during business. Two days after I found out where and why the phone line was cut, which was by one of the wells installed for testing, it came to my attention that my phone line was cut because of a test well in front of the lot to the right of me on this diagram or map. But then the second well that really brought things to my attention was in fact drilled onto my property, very close to the two trees that are supposed to be removed, and just the simple leftover clay from drilling a 30-foot well, and they did their best to clean it up. But when the rain came, we all know about red mud. It spreads bad when it turns, you know, with water, and so, again, my lot takes it right down into me, and I had an absolute nightmare scenario for several business days. So, again, really concerned. I mean, if one little well caused that much on me, then what is these trees, stormwaters, you know, or lack thereof, going to potentially impact me, is my concern.
And Mr. Gunther, do you have any concerns with potential parking overflow into the shopping center that?
Again, trying not to speak as an expert, but yes, I do. And again, I don't want to cross the line as far as crossing traffic, but I can testify that I have personally gone out to these intersections that are in accidents, and it's common. It happens. And so, my concern here is, if this is going to be an auto repair service of three bays and three employees, and we have seven parking spots?
With one handicap, yeah, so there are eight total.
So, eight total with a handicap, three employees. I just, my concern is, if this is an automotive repair shop, and I understand this isn't a fast food and we're not after traffic at volume times here, but how can they operate out of such small parking? What if just one car cannot be repaired right then and there and, you know, has to be held overnight perhaps for, you know, additional repairs or parts, et cetera? So, I just find it hard to believe that they will be able to sufficiently and safely park potential overflow cars. I don't know where it's going to go. My biggest concern is that they would, one of two things, put on Old Holly Springs Road here, which, again, in my opinion, would cause safety issues. And I, in addition to that, in short, I just, I really, I don't see how it's possible. I don't see how it can conduct business on a daily basis without having overflowed parking issues, and I honestly just don't see any good options as far as preventing this from happening.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Gunther. I don't know if, at this time, could I make closing remarks, or do I need to wait until he's?
I think it's okay to, we still have cross-examination of that witness. Would you, would we?
You should do that first.
Okay. So, this time, I'll invite cross-examination while you're there, Mr. Gunther.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Mr. Gunther, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Could you kindly, again, on the map up here, where is your property located?
My property is the property to the left, lower portion of your screen, thank you, which butts up directly to the entrance to Swift Creek Shopping Center.
And could you tell the council what your business is on that property?
Well, I'd be more than happy to. I am also an automotive repair facility.
No further questions.
Okay. Okay, we're hearing background noise here. Mr. Gunther, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Call on staff to, unless you have?
I would just like to reserve the right to close your honor.
Okay.
Your worship.
Your worship.
Your worship.
So, we're going to let staff speak, cross-exam, and they will allow closing remarks from each attorney?
Correct.
Okay, just to make sure I'm not stepping out of line myself. So, at this time, I'll open it up to staff for additional comments.
Thank you. Yeah, just like to add a few professional observations regarding the request. First, would like to, just big picture, remind you, council will be taking action on the two modification requests as well as the site plan. Of course, the site plan is in front of you today because there are modification requests on the project. This project has been through four rounds of the Development Review Committee. There are some outstanding details to be resolved regarding the sewer line extension from the south. Otherwise, all details have been resolved. Of course, it'll have to fully comply with the LDO standards before it can receive approval if council does approve it this evening. Just to reiterate and summarize on the minor modification requests, first being the reduction of the streetscape 30-foot requirement along Tryon Road and Jones Franklin Road. Those are the thoroughfares, a 15-foot streetscape requirement on Old Holly Springs Road, which is the local street. They are proposing to reduce that to 10 feet along all three streets. We'll note here that the property is a half-acre property that has an irregular shape, surrounded, of course, on the roads by all four sides, tapers to a very narrow width on the east, which makes that portion of the property very difficult, if not unbuildable. The second modification requested is reduction of the building setback along Tryon and Jones Franklin Road, again, from 30 feet to 10 feet is the request. Note that the impacts placed upon the property by the reduction of the building setbacks from right-of-way are very similar to the impacts of the streetscape reduction. We'll also note that the building, proposed building actually would be setback farther from Jones Franklin, or excuse me, Tryon Road right-of-way than the proposed building. I think Mr. Brady alludes to that. That completes staff's presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
This time, I'll invite cross-examination of the town witness from either attorney.
Mr. Loveland, could you tell me whether the site plan as proposed satisfies the parking requirements under the town code?
Yes. The LDO requires eight parking spots for this use based upon the type of use, vehicular service, repair, and the size of the use itself. The requirement is for two parking spots for vehicular service bay and 300, excuse me, one parking spot for every 300 square feet of the remainder of the building. In this case, given the particulars of the building, that worked out to eight parking spots. The way the LDO is set up, that is, for commercial, that is a minimum and a maximum.
And could you explain to me whether or not the proposed site plan increases, decreases, or retains the existing impervious versus non-impervious area on the site?
The site plan documented a decrease of impervious surface from the previous impervious that was in place in 1998, I believe was the date.
No further questions.
Okay. Further cross-examination.
Mr. Loveland, I just have one question related to the right-of-ways. Are there any right-of-way improvements along James Franklin Road or Old Holly Springs Road to support this project or development?
There are existing improvements, as you noted, existing traffic devices along both the intersection of Old Holly Springs Road and Jones Franklin and a median on Old Holly, excuse me, Campbell Road. The only improvements they are proposing to make is painting, some traffic centralization. This traffic device is already existing.
Right. And it's my understanding, I do have one follow-up question, there are two driveway cuts into this proposed development. Has NC DOT issued a driveway permit for either one of these driveways?
I'm not sure if they have or not. They'll need to obtain all driveway permits required before a building permit is issued.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Loveland.
Thank you.
This time, I'll ask either attorney or attorneys representing both parties if there's any objection to the competency of any evidence or testimony.
If I may, Your Honor. The evidence that was presented for the applicant was totally and almost completely expert testimony, and I would suggest that although I understand the property owner's concerns, and I appreciate that, they are not based on expert training, education, or experience. I would ask that those matters not be considered in rendering an opinion or ruling on this request. The evidence that you've heard from the experts as well as from the town is that this site plan satisfies in all respects, save the request for the exceptions that are the setback requirements. This site plan satisfies in all respects the zoning requirements that the town has for this particular piece of property. And again, I would once again ask that it be unanimously approved by this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
And I'll try to be brief. As you know, there are six development criteria that you have to consider under Section 3.92 of the LDO, three of which are directly related to traffic impacts. It's apparent from the staff report and the testimony before you tonight that while there may have been a traffic study, it was not included in the packet. We have not been able to see that, and I think the testimony was confusing as to whether or not, how cars traveling down James Franklin Road would be able to access Old Holly Springs Road. It is a very awkward turn there. And I would argue that a car cannot make a left-hand turn off of Jones Franklin Road onto Old Holly Springs Road. And I think that is consistent with the testimony that was before you tonight. Also, the very first criteria that you have to consider is whether or not the plan complies with the LDO and in particular, Chapter 7 and 8. The applicant has requested a variance from these two requirements for both streetscape and building setbacks that are on the screen before you. This is not consistent with neighboring properties. My client, Mr. Gunther, testified as to the streetscape that's in front of his parcel, which is actually larger than 30, 30 feet. And I would submit to you that a 10-foot streetscape and setback is not consistent with the other neighboring property owners there in this area. Obviously, with a deviation of setbacks, there's also a concern regarding visibility. And I don't think it's apparent from the testimony tonight, the true impact that additional traffic would have in this area. And quite frankly, without a formal traffic study, I don't know how we could properly analyze numbers four, five, and six that are before you tonight. So for these reasons, we would ask that you deny the proposed site plan that's in front of you now.
Thank you. Before you leave, my next process question might be indirectly related. And that's the question of, do you believe the evidence that's been presented tonight that warrants a continuance of this hearing?
We would ask that if, if you, yes, if you feel that there is a need for additional input, which we do for traffic concerns, I would ask for a continuance. I would first ask for a denial, given that I'm not the applicant's attorney. But if that is something that you are considering, if you're considering approval, I would ask for a continuance.
Okay. And at this time, according to my procedures, I'm gonna look at Ms. Silverstein, make sure I'm still in line here. If the council believes that evidence or lack of evidence presented tonight warrants a continuance of this hearing, a motion would be in order. So at this time, I'll pause and see if such a motion is going to be made.
You can actually make that motion now or during deliberations. It really.
Okay.
At any time you want to make it.
Okay, very good. We'll continue then into the deliberative, thank you.
Thank you.
Deliberative phase of this hearing. And open up to council members for questions.
Cool, I have some.
Go ahead. Jack, you and I live.
Yeah, you're right. And Mr. Brady, you said you do it twice a day. I think I can triple that trip volume and go this way quite a bit every day. One of the, one of the questions I have is for, just for clarification, can you put the other slide up with the?
Layout.
Layout, yeah. You know, sometimes you go by it so often, you take things for granted, so. Oh, is the slide on? Oh, I got the wrong place, never mind. That's my. Give me a break. Old Holly Springs Road, is that right now a one-way? This is a question to the staff.
I believe that is two-way traffic.
It is two-way. And, but if you're going.
Left to right on the screen.
Yeah, left, if you're going to the right on the screen, up to Campbell, there's a median there, there's no left turn.
Correct.
Okay, I want to make sure of that. And there was, I forget who stated it, but there were some trees coming down. Can you point out where those trees are coming down?
Well, they're gonna be off-screen here to the southwest.
Are you talking about the lower left of that?
They're gonna be in front of this property here.
And why, and why are they, why are they coming down?
There's an extension of the sewer line to serve this property.
Okay.
That's coming from the southwest up to the property. The, it's gonna run through the right of way, and so the trees are at the location of the property line. So the only way to put that line in place is remove all the trees.
So, and, and because of the sewer line, you won't revegetate that?
No, they will, they will.
Interesting.
With some holly trees, some evergreen vegetation. Now, that has to be placed off the line, but it'll still be in the right of way.
Okay, now, one of the questions I have is, in the morning, off of Holly Springs, the traffic flows off of Holly Springs, coming from Holly Springs, heading up to Tryon. They divert onto Jones Franklin, and there's an incredibly long queue going straight across. But there is an incredible free flow to make a right onto Tryon. And the near misses or accidents, I don't know if the staff has any information on the accident rate, but the left turn arrows are very, very, very confusing. And what happens is where the person that owns the, the existing repair, I believe people are pulling out thinking it's safe to pull out because they see the right turn arrow to go into the shopping center, but the arrows really intended for Tryon Road. And you have more near misses, it's an awkward-looking sight. You know, to me, it may not be the applicant's problem, but we ought to be taking advantage of trying to fix at least the signage there on the road because it's, it's very dangerous. And again, the person who is not the expert, Mr. Gunther, anecdotally explained about the accidents. And I, I think it'd be good from the staff if they had any information about the accidents at turning into the shopping center there. The egress, egress into this site is going to be off of Holly, Old Holly Springs Road, correct?
Correct.
Where else? I, I do believe that the, the ability to turn in off of Jones Franklin, turning left, coming from the north and coming down, it's so close to the intersection. You know, I think that, that really needs to be considered carefully because, and maybe in the off-hours, you can safely make that turn in.
There would be no allowance right now for a, if you're southbound on Jones Franklin, you.
Okay.
There's a median.
Well, you know, that's.
If I'm not mistaken.
Interesting conversation from the other person. You know, I'm so busy paying attention to the traffic, I don't think I ever realized that median was there. You know, bless those rats.
You've probably gone over it.
Well, I've done that too, I'm sure, but bless those rats trying to get across. So, you know, from my perspective, the Holly Springs, is it, are they allowed to make a left out of Holly Springs onto Jones Franklin?
No, the, well, the median prevents that.
Okay.
Whether it's physically possible, the median is in place, is designed to prevent that.
Now, I, I just think that as the site is peculiar, so is some of the old development there getting in and out. You know, frankly, if I was, Mr. Gunther, I'd argue not to replant those trees over the sewer line because then you could see, see the business of these.
And let me clarify, I may have misspoken. Can you, if you're southbound on Jones Franklin, you may be allowed to make a, a left turn on Old Holly Springs. I'm not certain on that, so let me, let me retract that. There is, this median is in place. Does it prevent this left turn movement that, that I'm not going to speak of? So let me retract that.
Sorry, what median is in place?
Yeah, get the other.
That little black?
This pork chop is in place now. There, there is. There is some improvement there now that's designed to make this westbound on Old Holly Spring turn right only, to turn northbound on Jones Franklin.
Right.
But as Mr. Francis.
When we look at the image, there's actually dual double yellows that simulate an island that prevent a left turn from Jones Franklin onto Old Holly Springs, at least from the image.
Which image?
Bring up that one, that one right there.
That is a.
I see two double yellows with lines in the middle of them that simulate a painted median. Can you tell me when that was painted?
I cannot, no sir.
Can anybody tell me when the median on Campbell Road was put in? Because according to the applicant's traffic engineer, that did not exist last year when they did their assessment.
Was there last year?
I believe it's been there quite a while. It was done with the Tryon Road improvements and the leftover that you see going into Campbell. I think that was all done at one time.
Because the applicant, traffic assessor, expert also said that people coming down Jones Franklin, if traffic was backed up beyond Old Holly Springs, they could come around down, come up Campbell Road and make a left onto Holly Springs, which is physically impossible.
Right.
So I have virtually no faith whatsoever in the applicant's traffic assessor. My first question is, is this site required to have two access points? And if so, are both required on Old Holly Springs Road?
It's not required to have two that I'm aware of. I think that's just a solution that they identified in the development stages.
Can you bring up the site plan picture again, please? One concern I have is the request for 10-foot streetscape along Tryon Road. I think that is, while it's better than actually what's there today, it is out of character with everything else that has been built and developed along that road. I struggle to understand why we have two access sites that if we eliminated, say, the western one, would allow for the building placement to change, pull that building away from Tryon Road, and at least get something a little more consistent with what's there. So that's a first concern, besides traffic and our access in and out. I can appreciate the difficulty of the site to develop. I do have only eight parking spaces, including one handicap, really?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which I also find hard to believe if this is a three-bay shop and there's three guys working in the bays, who's answering the phone and working the counter? But it's not my business model. We heard a little bit about test wells on-site, contaminated site. I mean, are there any concerns with that or is non-issue?
That, I have no knowledge of, of the test wells there. That's non-expert testimonies that really.
I understood, I just didn't know if the town had any knowledge of that. I, I really struggle with the placement of the site and access. I think this site could have been developed a lot better. I would like to know actually more about what types of repair and service are planned, but I don't think that's something that I can really get into. Eight parking spaces for a three-bay shop, that's nothing more than a quickie lube and inspection station. Anything beyond that, you are going to have vehicles carried overnight, parked, stored, waiting on parts, special order stuff, deliveries from dealers, you name it. So if it's only lube service and state inspections, I can see eight spaces. Anything beyond that, I can't. And I happen to be an expert on that. Those are my concerns, I cannot support this tonight as it's brought before me.
Let me ask the question that was sort of related. You were talking about streetscape a while ago. To the east or the right, as we're looking at the screen, the, the square that's not touched, right now, it's just dirt. Are they planting anything, doing anything? Because I see overflow parking going in there.
Well, we have suggested consideration of a condition to landscape that. So that at that point.
Or just the edges?
Well, it's so skinny that by the time you put in 30-foot yards, it basically eats up the whole space. But what that, what that condition would do would reduce the modification request from the entire length of Tryon Road to just two-thirds to a half of it, or from the entire length of Holly Spring Roads to just a portion of it that, let me, which is what the red highlighting here is pointing out. That's what the, the condition would suggest. Council certainly doesn't have to adopt that condition if they don't, if they don't see fit. Now, the site plan proposed in front of you does not propose any, any parking or other improvements, obviously, on that portion of the lot.
Does it propose any vegetation in there? I guess is where I'm getting at. Because if they're not going to do anything with it, then there are going to be cars there. There needs to be, it's my opinion.
They are not currently proposing anything. Again, if the adoption of that condition would mandate that they do that. But that's council's will.
That's another concern I have.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to let you know it's reached the one hour.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, not that I'm happy with it, but the, the staff report mentioned that the property to the, I guess it's the west, the kangaroo also has a very narrow streetscape, right? Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
It didn't actually say how big it was. I think it was less than 15 feet. So the, the streetscape across the street is at the correct width, the, on the other side of Tryon Road. Those are all at the correct width?
I believe they are, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the, how far down? I mean, has this been pretty consistent on that side of the road? I mean, do, does it have the kangaroo, is it 10 or 15 feet?
CVS is, the new CVS is just down, there you go.
Yeah, that's at 30 feet.
I'm not familiar enough with the area to, to give you the, the width of, of all the streetscapes.
Okay, so it does.
Perhaps Mr. Hales can elaborate.
So it's just that kangaroo that has the unusual, small.
Well, development that preexists the widening of Tryon Road along that corridor all has a narrower streetscape because the town acquired additional right of way to widen Tryon Road over time. So the kangaroo, the adjacent Swift Creek Volunteer Fire Station, and then you get to the corner where CVS is, and CVS was developed after that, and they came in as a separate thing.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that. The same thing happened along Jones Franklin Road. You'll notice that there's a lot of extra right of way on the south side of Jones Franklin Road. At some point, that right of way is obtained. If you look at the, the, Mr. Gunther's site plan he provided as an exhibit, that's not a 50-foot streetscape, it's a 17-foot streetscape with 32-foot of.
Right of way.
Extra planted right of way. Because that right of way was acquired sometime after the development occurred and was made legally not conforming by that move.
I see, thank you, thank you for that information. Okay, that's the rest of my questions.
Other questions, comments?
I, I think it's very, just one other comment. I think that this traffic, I, I don't go there as many times as you all do, but I see it back up as well. And I see people making the quick cut-through. They want to go right on Tryon Road, so they cut through that Old Holly Springs Road and then make another right. So I see that all the time, you know, and they cut across traffic. And Campbell Road can get backed up as well at some times when I've gone down there to the Campbell Nursery across the street. So there is a way, just to Mr. Francis' comment, and I don't know if this is what the traffic engineer was, or traffic assessor was talking about, but there is a small road through the shopping center. Are you saying that they can't make a left onto Old Holly Springs from Campbell Road? As they go north, there is this.
No.
You know, if they come down, they can make a, a left into the shopping. Right, coming south.
There's a concrete median in Campbell Road, a small one that prevents a left turn. If you're northbound on Campbell, you cannot make a left onto Old Holly Springs Road.
Oh, there's a.
It's already existing.
So there's a median there that stops you?
There's a small concrete strip. Median may be the wrong word, but.
Okay, so you would have to go all the way down Jones, to, to do this loop, you'd have to go all the way down Jones Franklin?
But you can't come back up Campbell.
Well, or go eastbound on Tryon and make a turn, right turn on Campbell, another right turn on Old Holly Springs.
You'd have to use the shopping center to get in and out if you want to go the opposite direction.
Okay. Great, thank you, I couldn't see that from the map.
Oh, there's a better picture.
Okay, thank you.
So if we're out of questions or comments, then we have several options before us. We can continue it?
Just.
Please.
One comment. We're seeing this because of the minor modifications.
Yes, sir.
Were not for the minor modifications, this probably would have gone through staff.
It would have been eligible for staff approval, but of course, you know, that's a, the reduction of the streetscape and the building setbacks are what enable the site plan. I mean, they're, it's very obviously dependent on that, but correct.
Wouldn't work otherwise.
Correct.
Okay, well, I just, we wouldn't have seen it if it weren't for those setbacks. And I think we have a change pending in our LDO that if we have minor modifications, this is just an aside, if we have minor modifications, we got to see it. But if we, you know, we only look at the minor modifications, we wouldn't even have a chance in the future to look at the site plan.
Mm-hmm, I think this is a great example of.
This is a case of that.
Yeah, it really is. So if you stop and you say, okay, what do we think about the setbacks and the landscape reduction? Is, you know, is that something that you would say is so bad that if you couldn't have that, it's so bad that you shouldn't have this?
that, that it's so bad that you shouldn't have this plan? And this plan could not happen without that. I mean, it's, we get, we get reductions all the time, reduction requests all the time where they could still do their plan, but they're just asking to eat into it. This is one that could not occur without that reduction. So it's, it's a little bit more important, but all this conversation about the, the road access and off-site trees and stuff like that, we wouldn't be contemplating in the future. And, I don't know, it's, I think this is a very tough one, because I do think it's a, it's not a well-used site right now. The problem is, is that the reductions are pretty substantial. It's very rare for us to do such a substantial reduction. You almost feel like it's, it's a great project, but it's maybe being shoehorned onto the site. And I do have apprehension about the eight parking spots. I mean, I go over to France Automotive, I can never find a spot. I don't know how many spots you have.
Not enough.
Not enough. But it's, I think it's probably more than eight.
A few, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I just, I have concern about that. But I think it's a, I think it looks like a great project. I just wish that the site was bigger and better able to accommodate it.
My concerns is the building setback, streetscape reduction. Access is a secondary concern.
So Mr. Francis, getting back to what you're saying, you're, and I, I like what you said. If, since they're not required to have two access points, if they have one access point, then you could relocate that building, then you could get the buffer requirements, setbacks, maybe.
Or closer to the intent. 30 to 10 is, I mean, we're talking way more than 50 percent there, you know? I mean, we do reduce buffers and streetscapes and stuff at times when it's reasonable. I'm not a site designer, engineer, architect. I don't know why they chose to put the building where they did, other than possibly visibility.
Point of clarification, there is a requirement that the building be on, on the northwest corner of the site. You cannot locate parking in between a building and a thoroughfare. So that does push the building to the northwest corner. That's a requirement.
In fairness, when you look at the other slide, the, the buffer will be the same as on the kangaroo side.
Right.
And that, as meager as it is, it is grown in, you know, and it does provide, there would be a kind of a consistent look. You can see kind of how little it is. You know, it's almost where I'd rather just see, as small as the buffer is going to be reduced, you know, have it, have it aggressive in its opaqueness, you know, that it's thick. You almost want them to, I'd rather, I'd rather plan for the fact that you might need those parking spaces, and you just want them buffered a little bit for, for appearance. So, you know, to me, I'd just like to see, you know, I could live with that 10-foot in that intersection versus a, you know, bluntly a rat-infested abandoned place. And it is such an awkward place. But, but Mr. Francis, you are right. If it is, you know, if it is something more than that basic service, there's going to be some parking problems. And I don't, I don't know if we're allowed to even factor that into it, I think.
Well, I did want to speak to that, Mr. Smith, that the parking does meet the LDO requirements.
Okay, well, that's, that's fair. That's, that's fine.
I have a question, because going back to that picture with the kangaroo on it, I understand that they've reduced their streetscape buffer, but how far back is that building set? That's pretty substantial.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't have a distance to give you.
It really is more important, I think, to keep the buildings in line than it is to have this minimal, the, the streetscape the same. I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it would be, it would look harmonious. I, I think that's a very fair point, though, about the parking. If that's what we require and they're adhering to it, then that's fair.
Yeah, but the CVS and the others aren't in line either. The photo, the fire station is way back, so-
Yeah.
-that whole row is, you know, in, out.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the, having the same 10-foot buffer, that won't make it look harmonious.
Speaking of the parking, from what I understand, you can't have parking between the building and the road, so the kangaroo couldn't be built like that today.
Correct. In 2012, council adopted an ordinance amendment, which was part of the Site Design Standards Project, which was intended to bring buildings up to the intersection. So all the development you're looking at around it was developed pre-2012. You would be able to move the building a little bit, but you wouldn't be able to put parking there. So given the constraints of the site, that would be a tricky maneuver.
I actually like the plan, and the, the struggle I have is imposing our standards in this really odd area. That's, that's, it's really that simple. I, you know, we can be, we can stick to the rules, and it's almost a little bit like the other argument we had, and we have nothing there. And that's such a nice intersection that if you just get something there that's functional, it would really add to the area.
And I struggle with it, and I'm like you, I go by there several times a day, and I can't imagine what else you could put here. Everything else would require more parking, would create more trips. I can't think of anything off the top of my head. This might be the best you can get on that corner.
Yeah, I mean, this is a dictionary definition of an extremely constrained site.
Right.
If there's any site that cries out for reductions, I think this, this is one that does. The traffic flow issue is, it's a concern, but-
It's not going to get better. It's another-
It's six peak hour in the morning and 10 peak hour in the afternoon. I mean, it's not a, yeah, and no matter what goes there, it's going to be a, be an issue. Six and 10 is, meets our parking requirements for the LDO. Yeah, the tree removal I don't like, but that's standard, that's the way it works with, when we put a sore line in, and there will be replanting. It decreases impervious surface, as far as the stormwater issue is concerned. I mean, I, I, I'm leaning toward, toward liking it.
Can you put the modification slide back up again?
The summary table, or one of the-
Yep, the summary table, right. And one other, one of the modification requests showed the red line around with the streetscape, and there was discussion, as the mayor brought up, with respect to the eastern corner.
Yes, ma'am.
And the suggestion of the modified streetscape was, was requesting additional landscape to be on the east side?
Correct.
Is that as part of the modification? Is that an offer?
No, that's a suggested condition of approval.
Okay, is that an offer of a condition by the applicant?
No, suggested condition by the staff, right?
Right now, it's a 30-foot buffer, and you're saying, don't grant a, a reduction in the buffer for the whole site, just reduce, just approve it for the section in red.
Essentially, that's not how it's worded, but essentially, exactly.
Okay, and we're not seeing any kind of vegetation shown on this plan, but they will be required to vegetate the 10-foot strip?
Correct.
Are they required to do more vegetation if they're reducing?
The, the condition is worded using the current streetscape planting standards, so it would meet exactly the, the current standard. But it's essentially, as you just said, it's like you're not granting the modification for this eastern portion. It's just going about it wording-wise a slightly different way.
And what is the, is that a trash area right there?
Correct. This, this is a waste enclosure around the, the screening around their dumpster. This is a transformer pad.
Okay. So it's not like vehicles would be able to squeeze through there, right?
That's right.
To address the concern about overflow parking?
Yeah, you're right, wouldn't.
Okay.
And Ms. Bush, in case you had a concern, in the, in a hearing like this, the applicant does not have to offer conditions?
Okay.
You all can impose conditions that you feel are necessary to keep the plan in compliance with the LDO.
Yeah, I always wondered when we get to offer and which one-
Different from rezonings, yeah.
I do have a question, and it's interesting. Was the, why, why is the transformer and the, the trash area, why has that not moved back as, as long as you would have, let's say you had that adequate screening all the way around, instead of, you know, the red, let's say the red just extended all the way around, and you had it completely screened, wouldn't it be in the best interest of the client to, to want those moved back?
Landscaping will surround the property. The red just represents the reduced landscape request.
I understand. So they'll have 30 feet in, in here, so this will basically be all closed in.
The eastern portion would be-
Triple the size.
Would be fully landscaped.
So they can't, it's any further east.
If we held to the, I mean, if they're already asking for the variance on the 10, the question I would have, why don't you just have 10 all the way around?
Oh.
And then move, move the stuff back a little so you have more, more flexibility with the site plan?
I mean, my argument would be, this is the gateway to the town. Town borders are right here, and so you would be hiding the dumpster and all that.
Just to clarify, answer that a little bit, if you moved that any farther to the east, you wouldn't have enough depth to pick up additional parking. You would just have additional asphalt that's really unusable, so in order to keep the impervious. There's not enough depth in the-
Answers a question. Thank you.
Is there, is there anything that can be done to go beyond what they're offering with the runoff? I mean, it sounds like that's a big concern of the neighbors.
They are capturing the, the runoff from the site.
Yeah.
The, the, the problem is, is that certainly the applicant can testify as to the conditions, I mean, the, the, Mr. Gunther can testify as to the conditions on his property.
We're not considering.
But in terms of where runoff goes, you really can't consider that.
Okay.
Fair.
Is there on-street parking allowed on Old Holly Springs Road?
I hope not.
I don't have an answer for that.
Is it striped with the yellow line?
There's no ordinance prohibiting on-street parking. I'm not sure it's striped.
Overflow parking could park all along Old Holly Springs Road, or cust, or employees could park on Old Holly Springs Road.
Really?
I'm not aware of the, the striping firsthand, as long as there wasn't double yellow line striped, which I would doubt on that old road.
I don't think it's got any.
There's no, absent ordinance, they wouldn't be allowed to park on one side.
It's just-
I don't recall there being any stripe.
Is there curb and gutter on Old Holly Springs Road?
I don't think so.
No.
Well, they, they have to build curb and gutter, right?
Yeah, I was wondering if it was there already. Doesn't look like there is.
Wow.
That could be a-
Further questions, concerns? Are we ready for a motion? If so, we would need to close the public comment portion and make such a motion.
I would entertain a motion to, what is it, not table on this, but delay?
Continue.
Continue?
Continue.
I'm either a deny or continue.
But you're not making that motion?
Well, I'm hoping the discussion's still-
Yeah, well, the, the, I, I think the reason I would be not inclined to continue is, I don't think there's a lot of options here. We either, we either like the lipstick on the pig, or, and we take something that's better than that's there, I'm just telling you what it is, and, and accept that that is far better than what we have. This is one where I don't think you can wait for great. I really don't. It's just too peculiar. You know what I mean? It's just too peculiar.
And to throw something back at you, this is a 4951.
That is quite insightful. I agree with that. I absolutely agree with that. So, I mean, I, I don't think we should continue, and I, I think it merits consideration, so.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and I would entertain a motion.
As I, I make a motion for the reasons discussed, that we approved the modification requests made by the applicant, as the requests meet all of the approved criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO. I make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
I have a discussion point. Does that mean, can you put the slide up with the red line? Does that mean that you, we're granting a waiver for just the area in the red, and we're keeping the 30-foot buffer around this?
As I understand it, it does.
That could be accomplished just by adopting the suggested condition.
It gives us, as the gateway, we get more buffer on that side.
And actually, it could, it would be more clear, and talking about it tonight has made this more clear, that we placed the condition on the site plan approval motion, so if you look a little further down, or it might be on the back page of your sheet, but there's a condition number two that talks about landscaping, so you might want to add that as a condition to your motion to approve the modification request? If that makes sense.
So take the condition from page two, number two?
Yes.
And then move it over to page one, number one?
Yes.
Would you like me to restate the motion?
Or amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion.
I amend your motion.
I gotta read number two now. Okay, for, for the reasons discussed, I move, we approve the modification requests made by the applicant, as the requests meet all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO, but also include, the applicant shall landscape the portion of the site east of the waste container enclosure with canopy trees spaced no more than 40 feet on center, and ornamental trees spaced no more than 20 feet on center. That make sense?
Mr. Smith has restated his motion with an amendment.
And I'll amend my second, too.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, over discussion.
A question I have, just for clarification, I mean, what actually happens if we have parking issues or on-street parking on Holly Stri, Springs Road that creates traffic concerns? I mean, it's-
You can always do a no-parking ordinance. It would have to come back before you, for council to adopt, on Holly Springs Road if you felt that there was parking there that was a, an issue.
They would not be in violation, they'll be meeting the LDO requirement.
The only thing I would suggest, this one's very difficult for me, this, the 4951. The problem for me is the reduction is so great. The reduction from 30 feet to 10 feet, and the reduction of the roadway building setback from 30 feet to 10 feet, it just seems, I don't know, it's two-thirds. It's, it's a lot, you know? I don't know, would it have made a difference if it was 15 feet rather than 10 feet? I don't know. It just seems like such a, a great modification. But I also see the difficulty of the site, and I can't imagine also what else could go there. So coming into this, I thought, in the beginning, especially with all the traffic concerns, that I was leading, leaning towards denial. But now I look at it, what else could go there, especially if they're already meeting the goals of the LDO? I don't know what else we could get there that, that would appeal. And the building looks fine, it's masonry, I mean, there's quite a bit there, so I guess that's, that's where I'm leaning.
I can think of three buildings that, when I go by them, it makes me go, because it just seems so close to the road. Morseville Carpenter Road, the apartments right there, across from the Feral Farm. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
The Harris Teeter up at Stone Creek that is right near the road, but it's down a little bit, it's just real tight, and we got a lot of complaints about that when that was built. And then the third one is the fire station that we're building right now, over here in downtown Cary. When I go by that, I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm so close to the road, it feels so close. But I'll say, over the years, watching the vegetation grow up over those first two sites, it has, it has softened the impact substantially. I mean, I would say especially the Harris Teeter, they did such a nice job landscaping that.
And it's down in the-
It's down, yeah, I mean, it definitely has that as an advantage, but it's still a big building. We got a lot of complaints about that when that first went up, I mean, a ton. But the vegetation has grown up, it really is okay. So I think a lot of the success or failure of this site will depend on how well it's landscaped around that area where the building, and, and the cars. I mean, nobody really wants to see a parking lot 10 feet, you know, from the street, but just how well it's vegetated is going to make a big difference, for what it's worth.
Further discussion?
I'm going to vote against the motion. It's too much of a buffer reduction, and I don't have much faith in a lot of the testimony I've heard tonight.
Other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. I'll now ask council for a motion for the site plan.
No, no. You got it? You got it? Jack, you got it?
You could do that one, Laurie.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for the reasons discussed. The, I make a motion that we approve the proposed site plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in section 3.9.2 of the LDO, that this approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining DRC comments in the master plan set submitted for signature, and that the applicant shall landscape the portion of the site east of the waste container enclosure with canopy trees spaced no more than 40 feet on center and ornamental trees spaced no more than 20 feet on center.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
And I have a question. At this point, if we wanted to have better landscaping around the area where either the parking or the building's up along Tryon Road, could we ask for that at this point?
You can impose additional conditions at this point that are easily related to making sure the request complies with the LDO. I'll point out, Mr. Loveland can supplement this, but they will be required to vegetate the, the area that they have to LDO standards. So Mr. Loveland can maybe explain what that would look like.
Well, it's the same requirement that you just read, the spacing 40 feet for, I believe it's canopy trees and 20 feet for an understory tree. So that's, that's the spacing requirement of streetscape. My concern would be, how much room do they have if you start imposing additional vegetation? It may not be enough room for that to be planted and to properly thrive.
And to address, to address Ms. Robinson's point more specifically, streetscapes only require for commercial properties understory trees and upperstory trees. There is an additional requirement for vehicular use areas to be screened with evergreen shrubs, so there will be a shrub component along the parking lots and vehicular travel aisles. If council is interested in ensuring that there is additional evergreen material outside of foundation plantings along the building facades, you may want to impose a condition that there be evergreen understory trees or large evergreen shrubs, whatever you feel is appropriate to meet what you're envisioning with the Harris Teeter example.
Okay. I don't know how to phrase that, though.
Some, Laurie could add some.
If you would give us a little more clarity on what you like about the Harris Teeter example, maybe we can work that out.
Well, it's your motion, but.
What is there that's different between what the LDO requires and what's there today?
There are, there are no evergreen shrubs required in a commercial streetscape.
No, I mean, within her example, as an example of her.
And I'm not intimately familiar with the High House Road corridor, because I don't drive that way very often. My guess is you're seeing some large evergreen shrubs, such as Nellie Stevens' hollies along the columns, to give it some softness and verticality, in addition to probably some larger, more consistent foundation plantings. The LDO requires 50% of the length of that facade be planted with foundation plantings. It doesn't require explicitly those be evergreen. So, in theory, I'm not familiar with the specifics of this plan, but in theory, they could come in with grasses there instead of an evergreen shrub. So you may want to require that 100% of that length of those two facades be planted with evergreen shrubs as foundation plantings, and that they provide whatever number you think is appropriate for large evergreen, larger evergreen shrubs.
I think what Stone Creek did is they put in a bunch of myrtles as well.
Well, and that would be covered by the ornamental trees.
That would be, okay.
So whether they're crepe myrtles, or red buds, or something along those lines.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll leave it to you, Laurie, it's your motion.
Yeah, I'm just gonna leave it and see. I think the applicants heard us, we went, yeah, he's shaking his head, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Mr. Loveland.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that's involved. Council will take a brief five-minute break, and we'll be back for our third quasi-judicial hearing.
I can agree with that.
We'll reconvene our quasi judicial hearing and move to our next quasi judicial public hearing. It's for SAS Building A, an overview of the hearing procedures, detailed rules that are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. We're going to pause just a moment to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And the council will pause until that has been completed. Councilmember Robinson and I are both employed by SAS Institute. Councilmembers have a duty to vote on items like this unless their vote is prohibited from or for being a conflict of interest purposes. Neither I or any member of my family will receive a direct benefit from this development plan. Neither I or any member of my family have a financial interest in this development plan. And I'll ask Mrs. Robinson to confirm the same is true for her.
That is true.
Okay. I'll now ask any councilmember if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, special knowledge, close relationships to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yurha.
No.
Ms. Bush.
No.
Mr. France.
Nope.
I have not.
I have not.
Ms. Robinson.
Well, my building is right next to where the site is, so I think I've had a site visit.
Okay.
But I don't walk around the site and contemplate the site plan.
Well, that's a good point. I'll restate my -- I drive by it every day, but I -- it's wooded, so I don't know if that's considered a site visit, but I do know where it is. So based on the disclosures we've heard from councilmembers, I would invite anyone to the podium who's been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a councilmember's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one will continue, and I'll open the quasi judicial hearing and recognize Mr. Hales of our staff who will introduce this hearing.
Thank you again, counsel. As you've indicated, the next item on tonight's agenda is a request by George Finch Bonian Associates on behalf of SAS Institute for approval of a approximately 415,000 square foot office building located on approximately 39 acres on SAS's corporate campus. Site is located in the southwestern quadrant of the intersection of Trenton Road and SAS Campus Drive. Trenton Road is identified as a thoroughfare and SAS Campus Drive is identified as a collector on the comprehensive transportation plan. The Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Facility's master plan does identify a proposed streetside trail running along Trenton Road. There was not -- the applicant is proposing to construct said trail with the Trenton Road improvements. Those improvements are not included in the current plan set, though they have been committed to due to the coordination required and some realignment coordination required with NC DOT and the applicant and the town. Those will be coming forward later as an administrative approval. Property is zoned office research and development, as is a majority of SAS Campus Drive. Properties to the south are zoned R-40. Property across the street zoned office and institutional. As Ms. Robinson indicated earlier, the site is currently wooded with a mixture of pine and hardwood forest cover. The applicant did do a tree survey as required by the ordinance, and you'll see in the staff report, the tree survey initially identified approximately 32 trees that are -- they met the diameter requirement for consideration as champion. However, Robert Day, a board certified master arborist with Bartlett Tree Service, did go out and evaluate all 32 of those champion candidates. And due to health, declining health or structural damage or even some mortality, only 17 of those 32 trees were considered champion trees, and we'll go into a little bit more detail about that later in the presentation. This is just a site photo taken along Trenton Road looking north, the intersection in the center of the photo is SAS Campus Drive and Trenton Road. You can see there is some significant topography right along Trenton Road. Some of that will be graded with road improvements and the multi-use trail along Trenton Road. However, there's -- there still will remain some topography to provide a break between the building and Trenton Road. Site is heavily wooded with the mixture of tree types we mentioned earlier. So as I mentioned before, it is a 415,000 square foot building. It is located pretty far back onto the site, as is consistent with other recent developments along SAS Campus Drive. It's the light gray area in the southwestern corner of the site. A large amount of surface parking would be located between the building and the adjacent intersection and rights-of-way, which is the reason for one of the modifications we'll be going over in a few minutes. Architecturally, SAS is actually exempt from the architectural standards being an office campus explicitly identified in the architectural standards document or portion of the CAM. However, the building design will be very similar to more recent designed buildings on SAS Campus, including SAS C and SAS Q. The proposed plan does include several modifications, seven to be exact. Two of those are approvable at an administrative level based on the changes to 3.19 of the LDO that was approved recently by council. Those are identified by numbers. Just briefly, not going into a lot of detail, item number one is a provision of sidewalk along only one side of the entrance drive coming into the site, given the lack of developability on the eastern side of that drive. And then modification number two is an administrative removal of a champion tree due to its being located in a location that is necessary for stormwater treatment. Based on its topography, the site falls down toward that corner, and there's a single sweet gum there that would have to be removed.
[laughing].
Going into a little more detail on the three -- the five modifications that do require council action, the first is a parking reduction. Based on the gross square footage of the building, they would be required 1,384 parking spaces. The applicant has come in and requested to propose only 1,114 parking spaces, which represents a 20% parking reduction from the LDO requirement. Modification B is a removal of three additional champion trees. These are located in a portion of the site that is really being modified due to the ability or the need to provide those parking spaces to support the building. They are 33 to 34 inch white oaks and a hickory. They are all in a single group, so they are a Tier One, Subcategory One Preservation for -- priority for preservation based on the champion tree ordinance. Modification C is a building location. We discussed this a little bit briefly in the last case. Site design standards that were adopted in 2012 prohibit the provision of parking for buildings located -- individual buildings located on sites at the intersection of two thoroughfares or a thoroughfare and collector, which SAS Campus Drive and Trenton Road are. So therefore, in order to be consistent with other buildings on the site, they'd be requesting a modification to allow that parking to remain between the building and the roads. Modification D has to do with pedestrian connectivity and specifically with a connection to Trenton Road. The LDO requires a pedestrian connection out to adjacent rights-of-way every 900 feet. The frontage along Trenton Road is over 1,000 feet. They have not provided pedestrian connection along that frontage to get it from the site out to Trenton Road. And the final modification being requested is a modification to the separation required in the LDO for lights in parking lots from proposed canopy trees. The LDO requires the minimum separation of 20 feet. The applicant has proposed a modification to go down to no less than 14 feet, which is the maximum reduction allowable by council. This concludes staff's initial presentation. The applicant will be up here in just a second to present their case, and staff will return to the podium following the applicant's presentation, any other speakers to provide some professional observations on the requested modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening. I'm Keith Burns with the Nixon Pruitt Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of SAS tonight, and you've heard we've got a few modifications we'd like to present to you, and I will not belabor each of those, but I would like to call on George to come up and address those and a few other issues. We've also had a little snafu as it related to getting soft copies of information to you on time, so we have unfortunately very low-tech hard copies of exhibits tonight, very uns-SAS-like, but they're coming around.
George? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes. Good evening. My name is George Finch. I'm president of George Finch Bonian Associates located at 309 North Boylan Avenue in Raleigh. I'm a 1975 graduate of NC State University and a registered landscape architect. We have had the pleasure of providing design services to SAS for almost 30 years now, and I'm pleased to appear before you again as we hope to gain your approval on this significant addition to the campus.
Mr. Finch, we -- you -- council has in front of them a site plan on the screen. Would you talk about the process of developing that site plan and the goals you had for developing that site plan?
Yes. In all SAS projects, we begin the design process with a number of goals shared between SAS and the entire design team. One of these goals for this project was to be environmentally sensitive. That would include limiting site clearing and grading on the site, minimize views from the public right-of-way, and avoid construction on steep slopes to minimize tree removal and grading. A second of those goals would be the facility should be user-friendly by providing pedestrian connectivity to other campus buildings, adjoining buildings, by providing adequate walkways from parking areas to all building entrances, and by positioning the building, in this case, to gain a strong tie to the existing SAS Conference Center. Other goals have been to complement the rest of the campus, comply with all regulations, and implement design and development best practices.
Mr. Finch, are you familiar with the carry LDO?
Yes, I am.
Does the plan as proposed comply with the LDO except for the conditions we've noted?
With the exception of the minor modifications, it is my professional opinion that the plan is otherwise in compliance with the LDO.
And does it protect surrounding properties from any adverse impacts?
Yes, it does. The proposed development is compatible with uses on the surrounding properties. I'll call your attention to this plan. I think you will be able to see some here. To the east, where the project adjoins non-SAS-owned property, we have maintained a minimum setback of 215 feet from the right-of-way of Trenton Road, and we have the building setback approximately 880 feet from Trenton Road. This substantial setback and the resulting buffers are adequate to minimize any visual or auditory impacts, if any. We have also incorporated adequate stormwater management devices that will avoid impacts on the adjoining properties.
And is the plan in harmony with the surrounding properties?
Yes, it is. The site plan complies with the town's land use plan and with the current zoning requirements. The proposed use is consistent with the current or planned office uses that are to the north and west of the project site, as well as the solar power generation facility that is to the south of the property, all of those being part of the SAS campus. The proposed use is also consistent with any use that's likely to be proposed on the property across the street on the other side of Trenton Road, as currently indicated in the town's land use plan.
Thank you. Does the plan provide safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
Yes, it does. For the benefit of pedestrians, we're providing walks that connect all parking areas to the building entrances. We're providing two walks connecting to the existing sidewalk along SAS Campus Drive. One of these goes down the main entrance into the site. The other will go across a couple of the parking bays and continue down the SAS C entrance to align with the walk across to Building Q. And we are also completing a prominent pedestrian connection. I think you can see on this plan that extends -- currently extends from Building C toward the entrance of this building, so we'll make -- we'll close that gap and complete that. Motors are safely accommodated by adequate drive widths and site distances. There are appropriate turn lanes at the SAS Campus Drive entrance.
And does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles?
Yes, the plan provides drives of adequate width for emergency service vehicles. There's direct vehicular access to the three primary entrances to the building, and there is direct fire department access to critical facilities at the building's surface court, which is on the south side here.
Does the plan provide for mitigation of traffic congestion impacts?
Yes, it does. In support of that answer, I would refer to the TIA that was prepared for the project, and Mr. Overcash will speak to that a little bit more later in our presentation.
Thank you. We've spoken some about minor modifications. I'd like to turn your attention now to the first of those, having to do with the reduction in parking. Can you describe the requested modification to me, please?
Yes, we are proposing 1,114 parking spaces. The basis for that number of spaces, there are two circumstances that we feel support our request for the parking reduction, and I'll be glad to get into detailed numbers if you'd like, but otherwise, I'll just provide general descriptions of these circumstances. Historically, compliance with the parking requirements of the LDO has led to large numbers of excess parking spaces on the SAS campus. Over an approximately 12-year period, actual parking counts have been taken and comparisons made to building occupancy on buildings on the eastern part of the campus that are of similar size and have been constructed in the last 15 to 20 years. This is表明that on any given day, the actual parking demand will be slightly less than 80% of the total building occupancy. Of course, we want to be comfortable with the factors that can -- that we feel contribute to this reduced parking count, and we want to make sure that these factors are stable and that they are dependable from season to season, year to year. We found these factors to be both work and employee-related, including periods when employees are working off-site, employees that are traveling to customer locations and to regional offices on a regular basis, and having an active program that offers preferred parking spaces to promote carpooling, and also providing secure bike racks and shower facilities within the buildings for those that would desire to bike to work. The second characteristic involves what we consider accessory uses found within the building. The lower level of the training center contains over 43,000 square feet. That's the large, somewhat square portion toward the south side there. It's about 43,000 square feet of space that contains a receiving area, food storage and preparation, serving, and dining space to seat approximately 700 people. All of this space supports the occupants of the building and the training center, and so that parking demand for that space is already attributed to the gross square footage of the office tower and the training center based on a fire occupancy rating. Also located throughout the building are collaboration areas that provide gathering space for work groups on each floor, which represents a duplication of space for some of the building occupants from their office space. These facility-related factors reduce the gross building square footage to what we call an effective building square footage.
So you mentioned that the experience over the last 12 years at SAS has been that SAS uses about 80% of the LDO-required parking. What parking -- what percentage parking reduction is being requested here?
If you -- 20% based on the overall gross square footage, not taking into consideration the duplication of space. But if you adjust for the duplicated square footage and look at the effective building square footage, then we're asking for a 6.5% reduction, which will align with our actual monitored parking needs.
Is this requested reduction consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
This minor modification is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, as it will allow us to meet the parking demand with some surplus built in.
And will that -- will this requested reduction, if granted, provide for less visual impact or more effective environmental monitoring?
Yes, it will provide for reduced site clearing and grading. The finished product will result in less visual impact and less impervious area that would be -- need to be attenuated for stormwater impacts.
In short, a smaller parking lot?
That's correct, more compact.
I want to switch now and talk to you about the champion trees. How many trees are being removed and where are they?
Mr. Robert Day, a certified arborist with Bartlett Tree Experts, evaluated all the potential champion trees on the site. And if you look at Exhibit D in the packet that we passed out, that's specific to the trees that were reviewed and are being removed. From the numbers that Kevin gave you, actually, some of those trees were off the site in final analysis, but there were 28 trees that were identified that would possibly qualify as champion trees on the site itself. Of these, 11 did not qualify due to being undersized or in poor health. Of the 17 remaining trees that do qualify as champion trees, we found it necessary to remove four of them due to their location within the construction activities on the site.
And one of those four is the sweet gum that was approved by staff because the basin is separate?
That's correct. Thank you for sharing my feelings about the sweet gum.
I've got to change, so.
Will you describe your efforts to save the champion trees, including the sweet gum?
Sure. We've designed the site layout with a number of priorities, to locate the building, to achieve the desired interaction and visual relationship with the adjoining conference center, because they share -- they will share many activities on a day-to-day basis. We wanted to avoid encroachment of some existing jurisdictional wetlands that are adjacent to Trenton Road, and we wanted to preserve open space and champion trees, with an intended result being the significant vegetative buffers that you see along Trenton Road and SAS Campus Drive. Two of the trees to be removed are located within sediment basins, the sweet gum and one other. Since these basins have to be located at the low point, the discharge of the site, even any adjustments that we made to the site layout would not relocate those basins to another area. The two other champion trees are in a portion of the parking area that would be impacted by significant amounts of fill between the existing conditions and the proposed conditions. If we tried to shift the parking area to accommodate those trees and the change in grade, then we were affecting other champion trees and other tree cover on a steep slope that's adjacent to that. I would say --
Go ahead, please.
I would say that of the 38 and a half acres in the property, this plan will leave 8.6 acres in an undisturbed natural condition. And in addition, after we remove the temporary sediment basins, we'll restore another 1.8 acres to a wooded, no-mow condition.
Is this minor modification regarding champion trees consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
Yes, it is. The LDO seeks to prohibit the indiscriminate removal of trees and to maximize the preservation of open space. In our plan, we have a layout that meets these goals and provides vegetated buffers ranging from 150 feet to 300 feet in width along the entire frontage of Trenton Road and SAS Campus Drive.
Are we proposing to replace the champion trees?
Yes. We will be -- we will be replacing those in the site plan with a total replacement diameter that exceeds the proposed removal and the requirements of the LDO.
And finally, will this request result in less visual impact or more effective environmental?
Yes, it will when considering the overall vegetative cover.
Thank you. I'd like to turn your attention now to the building placement and the parking placement. Can you briefly describe the ordinance requirement and why we've sought to place the building where we have?
The intent of the ordinance is to reduce the visibility of parking areas from the public right-of-way by restricting the location of the parking areas on the site. SAS is requesting relief from this provision based on an alternative layout that we feel accomplishes the intent of this ordinance.
And will you explain further why it is that we're requesting the alignment?
You might want to look at Exhibit E in your packet that we passed out. SAS A and the adjoining SAS Conference Center, which is directly across the existing parking area, will share, as I said, many customer marketing and training functions on a daily basis. For the convenience of those customers and employees, we chose to locate the building in a manner that would establish a strong physical relationship between the two buildings and promote pedestrian circulation, which would benefit the shared functions. And we feel this building placement provides for an orderly visual arrangement within the site.
And will this request, if granted, result in less visual impact or more open space?
From a -- just a land disturbance standpoint, this building stretches over 750 feet from one end to the other. That's a pretty big footprint. With the size of the building, of course, it was beneficial to place it on some of the flattest slopes on this piece of property, and that's what we have done in conjunction with locating in close proximity to the conference center. The location that we chose will allow us to minimize construction activities on steeper slopes adjacent to Trenton Road and thereby maintain the strong vegetative border that we are proposing.
And I think you said, but I want to confirm, that the buffering and the space that will remain along the roads will make this placement consistent with the intent of the ordinance to shield parking from view from streets. Is that correct?
The buffering is far in excess of the LDO's streetscape requirements, and in addition, the parking adjacent to Trenton Road is at an elevation approximately 15 feet higher than the road. So there's quite a bit of separation there horizontally and vertically.
So I'll turn your attention now to the request to eliminate a pedestrian connection to Trenton Road. Would you speak to why SAS is making that request, please?
Yes. The intent of the ordinance is to support the creation of a connected transportation system within the town, providing options for drivers, pedestrians, and those using other means of transportation. SAS is requesting this minor modification as relates to the Trenton Road frontage. As indicated in the staff report, SAS is not a commercial, residential, or school destination that would draw high volumes of pedestrian traffic. Mainly for purposes of campus security and safety, visitors entering the campus are monitored by three manned guardhouses, one of which is located immediately adjacent to the site at the intersection of SAS Campus Drive and Trenton Road and has sidewalks for pedestrian connectivity at that point. This access point would provide pedestrians with an entrance into the campus while maintaining the ability of campus security to monitor and provide assistance as needed.
And will this request, if granted, reduce impacts and environmental concerns?
Yes, it will. The steepness of some of the slopes in that area adjacent to Trenton Road would require probably a more circuitous route for that. probably a more circuitous route for that pathway connection and would result in more clearing and grading than just a direct connection off the edge of the street.
I want to turn your attention now and talk to you about the reduction in the minimum spacing between trees and light poles. Will you describe that request for us, please?
Yes, the ordinance states that in order to prevent conflicts and allow for appropriate maintenance, canopy trees should be placed at least twenty feet from light poles, the expressed intent being to prevent conflicts and allow for appropriate maintenance. SAS is requesting a reduction to fourteen feet of separation. Why we're making this request, we created the need for this request, this reduction due to some somewhat conflicting priorities. First of those was our intent to keep the parking area as compact as possible. To accomplish this, we followed the LDO in placing two bays of parking together without a continuous median. You can see that in all the parking bays here except for those directly in front of the building. We worked diligently to provide adequate sidewalks, including adding some additional sidewalks that the staff had requested, while at the same time meeting the required setback for trees adjacent to a sidewalk that occurred. We met the light level requirements for parking, but lighting, of course, is controlled by fixture type and spacing, so we didn't have a lot of flexibility there. And we have provided the appropriate number of canopy trees along with the required ground area to support proper growth of those trees. While we've met all of these requirements and goals, we're not able to meet the setback requirements between the trees and light poles in all locations. To meet the intent of the ordinance, I would point out that SAS benefits from a highly qualified, trained, and experienced full-time landscape staff that is responsible for all aspects of ground maintenance on the campus. As opposed to an outside contractor, they will be planting all the trees in this project as is customary, and will take particular care to place each tree with branches positioned to avoid direct contact with light fixtures as the trees mature. In addition, the SAS staff will be performing all annual maintenance and pruning to maintain a suitable clearance around each light fixture without the wholesale crown removal that might be necessary in the absence of regular maintenance.
Were the trees selected with the idea that they would be placed next to these features?
Yes, we tried to select trees that would have more of a vase-shaped or an upright growth habit so that we could, could probably work with those trees, those structures better than other trees.
And if granted, would this request be consistent with the goal to reducing visual impact and environmental concerns?
It will result in more effective open space preservation by supporting the more compact nature of the parking area, which limits the clearing and grading that might otherwise occur.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. And at this time, I'd call Lyle Overcash. We have an executive summary of Mr. Overcash's traffic impact analysis that's coming around. We also have some committed elements that are coming around that Mr. Overcash will be discussing during his testimony. Mr. Overcash, would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Lyle Overcash. Work for VHB Engineering here in Raleigh, four thousand West St. Boulevard, five-thirty suite number. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from North Carolina State as well, a little bit later, nineteen ninety-three than George, specializing in transportation. I'm a professional engineer licensed in Virginia and North Carolina. I'm a member of Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm the Managing Director of the Raleigh Office. Been employee at VHB for about fifteen years and been a traffic engineer for over twenty years. Since two thousand and four, we've been working on traffic studies in the town of Cary. As part of our on-call contract with the town, during that period, I've directed over eighty-five studies across the town.
I believe you conducted a traffic study for this building. Would you describe that study and your findings, please?
Yes, SAS approached my firm to assist with the preparation of the TIA. Since we've worked on previous studies on the SAS campus, most recently Building P across the street, we used standard and prevailing methodology in our industry to research to complete the TIA that was dated May of, May twenty-eighth of two thousand and fifteen, which evaluated projected traffic delay and queuing resulting from the construction of Building A. It also included anticipated diversion of traffic as a result of the future research drive extension, which was also accounted for in the analysis, and that's actually shown on Exhibit G.
Would you help identify that on Exhibit G, please?
Yes, if you take a look at Exhibit G, it shows the study area, the sending map for the TIA itself, and the research drive extension, which is a separate project to this project, is shown in a green and black dash line, and it's going to connect the rears of several buildings, S, U, C, and A in the future. It's going to provide some relief to SAS Campus Drive itself and just provide some additional flexibility and mobility within the campus. As part of the TIA, if you look at the blue dots, we studied the intersections along Harrison from, starting at the eastbound ramp, I forty, SAS Campus Drive, Bass Pro Shop Lane, Weston Parkway and Richard Drive, and then also Research Drive, and then along SAS Campus internal, the Research Drive intersection with Building B, the C, next CU intersection, the future driveway A, the Trenton Trinity intersection, that's the three intersections down at the bottom, and then the SAS Campus Drive intersection with Trenton. Those are all shown on G.
Let me skip ahead a little bit and ask you about the results of your, your study and the recommendations you formed as a result of that study.
Okay, we can start with Exhibit H, that'll be the next exhibit. This shows the widening that George spoke of along Trenton. We're going to be providing a northbound left turn lane along Trenton and a southbound right turn lane, and then also the ten-foot multi-use path on the western side of Trenton. Exhibit I shows two improvements that we are proposing. The one that was included in the TIA was the extension of the left turn lane going into SAS Campus Drive along Harrison. It would extend the left turn lane storage by a hundred feet. What also is shown on Exhibit I is, is a improvement that we identified in the TIA and that the town and NCTOT asked us to look at more strongly and was more concerned with an interim, and that is an idea that actually we had proposed maybe ten years ago with one other building on SAS when we were doing a study as part of the town. That is to make a free-flow lane for the outermost right turn lane off eastbound ramp. Then center lane, which would be a right turn lane as well, would come up to the signal, and then they could enter the back of the queue going into SAS Campus Drive. It would require additional signage on the ramp itself. It would require special channelization along Harrison Avenue to ensure that the weaving doesn't take place between the free-flow lane and the left turn lane, but we think it would greatly enhance the safety along the ramp and reduce queuing and maybe help clear up a little bit of confusion that may take place in that, in that area where people are weaving during those two signals.
And was there also a suggested modification to SAS Campus Drive?
The connection point is shown in Exhibit J. It shows the connection of the driveway. We recommended two turn lanes coming out of the driveway, so it would be a three-lane cross-section for Drive A, left and right turn lane coming out of the driveway.
I want to turn your attention now to the quasi-judicial findings that the council will have to make. First of all, does the plan as proposed provide safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
Yes, as George mentioned, the site distance triangles are appropriate at driveway intersections. Sidewalks are shown throughout the site within the parking lot. Primitive building has connections out to SAS Campus Drive and over to Building C. There will be a multi-use path along Trenton Road, and traffic calming measures are not proposed within the site but do currently exist on, on long SAS Campus Drive in form of speed humps.
And does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles?
Yes, the access driveway is proposed as three lanes wide to enable emergency vehicles to bypass the stop vehicles necessary. It's interconnected to Building C and the research drive extension to the rear, and adequate turn radio proposed at the site driveway and within the site to accommodate emergency vehicles.
And finally, does the plan provide mitigation for traffic congestion impacts?
Yes, significant widening along Trenton Road at SAS Campus Drive through improvements at SAS Campus Drive and Harrison Avenue, through improvements at I forty ramp and Harrison Avenue, and then site plan accommodations, including the turn lanes at the site driveway and pedestrian accommodations.
That's it, thank you very much.
Thanks.
SAS has worked hard to offer up a plan that, that complies with the, the unique character of the, the site, the topography, the size of the building, while at the same time working hard to preserve the environment and to meet the conditions of the ordinance. I hope that those things have shown through, and I hope that you will vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite other speakers who've been sworn in who wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Any one at all? Seeing no one, I'll invite Cross Examination, the witness who testified in support of the requests. Nope, we'll open up the hearing to those who are opposed to the requests, and you may approach the podium. Seeing no one, we'll call on town staff to see if they have any testimony to add.
Thank you again, counsel, and we'll try and be brief and not reiterate too much of what the applicant has presented in their presentation. Briefly go through the five approvals, five requested modifications for this plan that council's going to act on tonight, and then turn it over to Mr. Jensen to discuss some of the traffic mitigations that were just presented by Mr. Overcash. So in regards to the parking reduction being requested, it is definitely, as the applicant indicated, a reduction in the amount of impervious surface on site. Approximately two-hundred-and-seventy surface parking spaces removed, absent any associated drive aisles or other impervious outside the actual spaces themselves represent approximately one acre of additional paved impervious surface. That is not a guaranteed preservation of additional open space, obviously, and again, it would, it would have to be redesigned, but there are opportunities to examine or to investigate surface parking if they felt such additional parking was required. It would not increase the impervious footprint as much as that one acre. However, the applicant did present testimony, and based on staff's calculations, the training center and café, which are shared common spaces, to support this building and other buildings on campus, do represent approximately seventeen percent of the gross square footage of that four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand square feet. And also to be considered is that one of the, the main intent of the parking requirements in the LDO is to reduce potential impacts on adjacent properties from overflow parking that is not provided, when sufficient parking is not provided on site. In this instance, properties to the northwest and south are all owned by or controlled by in some way, shape, or form SAS Institute itself, so any potential impacts associated with overflow parking based on inadequate amount of parking being provided would only be impacting the developer of this project, so it's kind of a self-inflicted harm. Moving along to champion trees, staff did not approve these administratively. There is a temporary sediment basin that is impacting tree twenty-five as indicated by the applicant. The other two champion trees, tree twenty-six and tree twenty-four, are located in a proposed surface parking area. To some extent, the location and design of those surface parking areas are a discretionary call on the applicant's part. As indicated before, structured parking or other options may have been able to save those trees. We felt they were worth elevating to a council level. Just to give you a better idea, and you'll see some of the trees that Mr. Burns or Mr. Finch indicated were located offsite or identified here, these are the thirty-two trees that were identified in the arborist's initial report as being potential champion trees. The one, circles in green, are the ones that are, that are being preserved. The ones in red are the ones being removed by the applicant, and the one over in the far southwestern corner are the ones approved administratively due to the stormwater device. So you can see the additional surface parking based on the scattering of champion trees along SAS Campus Drive, Trenton Road, and especially the cluster in the southeast corner of the site. Any additional surface parking or expansion of the surface parking footprint would have the potential to not only require additional clearing of vegetation, would have additional impacts on champion trees, which are a higher priority per our LDO. Likewise, with the building location, putting the building farther back on the site is consistent with the layout and setbacks of other buildings that have been developed along SAS Campus Drive and on the SAS corporate campus. Locating that building up closer to the intersection would impact additional champion trees. There are no champion trees except for the one already being removed in the southwestern corner of the site. If you remember, there were champion trees up along SAS Campus Drive and along Trenton. Relocating the building up to that corner would obviously not only reduce the existing wooded streetscape along those two roadways, but also impact additional champion trees, which by doing, or making the request they have made, are, they're able to preserve. Pedestrian connectivity, basically all staff can say is, is the intent of that pedestrian requirement, providing access along the adjacent thoroughfares, is to serve a greater community purpose. SAS Campus operates a little uniquely, is not really a community destination. It's intended to serve its internal customers. Vehicular access is monitored as the applicant indicated in their presentation, so therefore there is some consideration that may be due, given the unique characteristics of this campus setting. In addition, obviously, not providing a pedestrian connection to Trenton Road would result in additional open space or additional existing vegetation preservation, especially when you consider the topography along Trenton Road. You saw the earlier existing conditions picture. Given the topography, it's not going to be a simple straight out to the road from the parking lot. There would be a lot of switchbacks and curves in there in order to make that an ADA accessible route, so that footprint is much larger than one would assume just based on a straight line. Tree light separation, I apologize for this, but the, the rendering provided by the applicant is a little incongruous with the actual planting plan itself. If you compare the light locations and tree locations in the parking lot, based on the actual site plan itself, you'll notice the, the trees are moved to one side, lights to the opposite side of the island. That's still only providing about fourteen foot of separation. From a horticultural standpoint, an arborist standpoint, if the trees are appropriately selected, which staff believes they are based on the information in the staff report, and if they are trained early, the tree habit is trained early and maintenance is kept up with, it is very possible to eliminate some of the safety concerns provided or that occur when trees overgrow light, light poles. It creates dark spots, and it creates a safety concern in the parking lot. SAS does have their own landscape crews. Anecdotally, they generally do a good, a good job. Just wanted to point out that is an option, however they are requesting a reduction. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jensen in the Transportation and Facilities Department to discuss the road improvements, and that'll conclude our presentation.
Good evening, counsel. As Mr. Overcash had pointed out to you, that they have performed a traffic study at this intersection. We also have had some, some dialogue with NCTOT, particularly about how we're going to get more vehicles into this campus from Harrison Avenue. DOT has expressed some concerns about traffic operations at SAS Campus Drive as well as off the eastbound off-ramp on, at Harrison Avenue, and we've had some good dialogues. I think in, in the traffic study that Mr. Overcash provided to you, that one of the options or opportunities to help traffic operations in this particular area is maybe converting that eastbound ramp to allow some free-flow movements to occur off of that, and that certainly could free up some additional capacity. Those dialogues with DOT is ongoing. To date, though, I don't have any commitments out of SAS to do any improvements at that particular intersection, even though the dialogue is still ongoing. Without a commitment from them, you'll continue to see excessive delays in that particular area and, and poor levels of service. The other intersection that, that was analyzed in the traffic study was Weston Parkway at Harrison Avenue. It also operates currently, particularly in the PMP cower, poor level of service and, and, and excessive delays. One improvement, and again, one improvement that was outlined in the traffic study that could help alleviate some of that congestion as well as improve level of service and delay would be to add a third southbound through lane on Harrison Avenue and shift the, what is now a current free-flow ride onto Weston Parkway, to shift that over. Again, that, that improvement would provide some benefit in that particular area. Without it, there'll be continued delays and poor level service at that intersection. They, again, have not made any commitments to do any improvements at that particular intersection, and that's all I have to make comment tonight about, and be glad to answer any questions as you go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Hales, anything else?
That concludes staff's presentation. We're available if you have any questions. Thank you.
I would invite Cross Examination.
Perhaps just one more word from Mr. Overcash if you'd like.
Okay.
Yes, concerning the improvement at the eastbound ramps, SAS is committing to that improvement. Go back to that. So that is a change from the TIA, where it was more of a long-term consideration, based on discussions with the town and DOT, were committing to doing that improvement with this building. At the other intersection at Weston and Harrison, Cherry is correct, that is a deficiency, especially in the PMP hour. But what we noticed during our analysis is that the delay actually increases about 70% in the PMP hour, mainly due to approved developments that have recently been approved in the area. We had two of those in our TIA, as well as a 2% growth rate. They were the Weston Lakefront, which I guess you referred to as MetLife, and then the Centigrade Park at Weston. So those are two sizable projects that were approved along Weston Parkway that contribute to the, I guess, just a triple F there, and that's a particular problem in the PMP hour. I'd like to point out that with the Research Drive extension, folks that would be coming down Weston Avenue and may typically go up and hang a left at Weston and take a right into SAS Campus Drive in the AMP hour, but now probably attempted more to take a right. So we actually saw a decrease in delay at this intersection with the construction of the Research Drive extension. So we showed a decrease in delay in the AMP hour, and I believe only about 8% increase in delay in the PMP hour. So when you compare it to, you know, what else is going on in the area and the way traffic enters the SAS campus, when they come up from Harrison, they enter into Research, or they come in from I-40, they enter into SAS Campus Drive, they kind of avoid this intersection for the most part. So we did not commit to any improvements at this location for that reason.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just like to add some clarification. The site plans currently in review do not include the commitment for the improvements to the eastbound off-ramp at I-40 North Harrison. If council wishes, they would probably want to add a condition that says SAS will make those as part of the site plan. The other thing we'd like to point out is, while there is a plan in review for the Research Drive extension, it is also not tied in any way to this site plan. So it could get approved and never get built, or it could not get approved. So just to caution you there.
Okay. Very good. Now asked if anyone has objections to competency of any evidence presented as testimony this evening. Seeing none, either party believe there's evidence presented tonight that warrants a continuance of this hearing? Seeing no one, it's now time for council to begin the deliberative phase, and I'll open it up to council members for comments or questions.
A quick question, if you don't mind. There was a comment about the commitment, that there's no current commitment for the free flow at Weston, and a comment by SAP, the traffic engineer, that he believes that MetLife may be adding to that issue. Did we have any requirements on the MetLife for traffic improvements at?
Council saw the MetLife sketch plan. That was a traffic improvement. There was, the issues were noted at that intersection. No mitigations were required as part of that approval at this intersection.
And were the same ones, does anyone know, were the same ones offered as, by staff, as opportunities for?
That opportunity has shown up on multiple studies in this area. It has not been required of anyone yet.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Tell us a little bit more about the Research Drive extension. You say that's separate? This is, neither are predicated on the other?
Neither is related to the other. Obviously, there are impacts to the research, on this project from the Research Drive extension. I don't want to speak for the applicant. One of the reasons, or one of the complications with that project is there is a lot of land swapping that has to occur between multiple landowners along that corridor in order for it to be annexed into the town or the area to be coming into the town's jurisdiction so we can approve the project. So that's a longer timeframe than I think that SAS was looking to get this building approved. That's why it's not tied together, or one of the reasons it's not tied together.
Okay. But Trenton Road will be widened with those turn lanes, and they will have a multi-use path along the frontage of this parcel?
The site plan doesn't include a commitment for those plans to come in after this, as a separate submittal to be done, as identified in the traffic study.
Okay. So it does include that already?
Correct.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Are we ready for motion?
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the requests meet all the approval criteria of the applicable full sections of the LDO.
A second?
Second, and then we, the extra.
That's a site plan.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, getting a little punch drunk, tired. We have a motion, second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. France.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with the conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2, aye of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following: that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature, and commit to make the improvements to the eastbound I-40 exit to Harrison Avenue.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll close the public hearing. We now move to our last quasi-judicial hearing of the evening. Middle Creek Community Library and overview of the hearing procedures in detail, rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and the council will pause from doing anything else until that has been completed.
Central, win or lose?
Oh, Central Florida?
Yeah.
12 to 14. To Florida International, dude. They lost all their receivers and secondary stuff. They were graduating last year, so they're pretty rare this year. Got all these people from. Dude, get up and say what you need to say. I thought they were all like, "For SAS, that's..."
I'll now ask council members for any site visits, ex parte, communication, financial relationship, specialized knowledge, close relationship to and affective person to disclose, starting on my right, Ms. Robinson.
No.
Mr. Smith.
No.
I have none. Ms. France, Ms. Bush?
No.
Ms. Yerha. Okay, very good. Based on the evidence and disclosure we've heard from council members, I would invite anyone to the podium that has an objection of any council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one, we'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Ms. Darden of our staff will introduce the hearing.
Good evening, council. The case before you deny Middle Creek Community Library is a request for special use and site plan approval made by OBS Architects on behalf of the Wake County Board of Education. The project's scope is a new 8,800-square-foot library with surface parking. The library would share the existing Middle Creek High School campus comprising 3.7 acres of the 61.9-acre site, and be located near the intersection of West Lake Road and Middle Creek Park Avenue. The library is located at the intersection of Middle Creek Park Avenue and West Lake Road. On the comprehensive transportation plan, West Lake Road is categorized as a thoroughfare, while Middle Creek Park Avenue is a collector. Transit facilities are not available in the vicinity of the project site. The park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Facility Master Plan shows an existing streetside trail on the opposite side of West Lake Road from the proposed library. There is an existing sidewalk along Middle Creek Park Avenue, and in the surrounding vicinity, a mix of proposed and existing greenway trails. The parcel is zoned residential 40 conditional. This zoning district was established to accommodate large-lot residential uses. Approval of a special use permit is required to allow institutional use such as a library in this zoning district. This requirement, in addition to the modification requested as part of the site plan approval, has placed this case before council this evening. Predominant vegetation on-site consists of small pines and hardwoods, and there are no champion trees within the project area. There are no stream buffers or floodplain within the project limits. The proposed library is located on the east side of the project side. From West Lake Road, the library would be accessed from the existing Middle Creek High School driveway. There is also a right-in, right-out access from Middle Creek Park Avenue. Pedestrian connections are provided from the library to the high school, to Middle Creek Park Avenue, and to West Lake Road. When combined with the overall site, the library project area does not exceed the low-density development intensity for watershed overlay. Therefore, no stormwater treatment devices are required. Required streetscape buffers will be provided along West Lake Road and Middle Creek Park Avenue. Internal buffering from the school side is not required, as there is no internal property line between the library and the school. Vehicle use area landscaping is proposed for the parking area. The building exterior is compliant with the Town of Cary architectural standards and is comprised of masonry, polished face, architectural CMU and brick veneer, with anodized aluminum accents. This rendering is representative of the form and mass of the building. However, the color palette has been modified to more neutral tones, is predominantly a gray color with brick and aluminum accents. The staff report included two modifications to the town standards. Modification A is a request for a complete waiver of construction of the eight-inch reclaimed water line required along Middle Creek Park Avenue. The applicant has not proposed to make a payment in lieu of the construction of the Though included at the time the staff report was prepared, modification B has been removed from council consideration. Middle Creek Park Avenue was improved under the 2000 thoroughfare plan. Therefore, the LDO designates the Transportation and Facilities Director as the approval authority to waive construction improvements that are identified in the current CTP. This waiver has been approved administratively. This concludes staff's initial presentation. At this time, I will invite the applicant's representative to speak on behalf of the Middle Creek Community Library project. Following the applicant's presentation and other speakers, staff will return to provide professional observations regarding the requested modification. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ken Murphy, and I am with the Wake County Attorney's Office. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Wake County. And I'm very pleased to be before council tonight for the first time, I might add, seeking a special use and site plan approval for a new Wake County Public Library project, the Middle Creek Community Library. This project involves construction of an 8,800-square-foot public library building on 3.7 acres of land that Wake County is leasing from the Wake County Board of Education. The leased land on which the Middle Creek Community Library will be located is part of a large 62-acre parcel owned by the Wake County Board of Education. Middle Creek High School is located on that parcel and occupies the majority of that parcel. A public library in this location on the Middle Creek High School campus was included on the master plan that was developed and approved in 1999 for the Middle Creek High School campus. And the Middle Creek Community Library is being constructed as a result of a bond referendum that was passed in 2007 by the citizens of Wake County for the construction of public library facilities. Now, I have with me tonight several people who have been instrumental in both the design process for the library and the preparations for tonight's quasi-judicial hearing. With me tonight are Brian Starkey, landscape architect with OBS Landscape Architects; Eric Sowers, architect with Dan Huffman Architecture; Dan Huffman, architect with Dan Huffman Architecture; Steve Miller, project civil engineer with CLH Design; Tom Hester, who is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser with Hester and Company; Jeff Hokanodle, traffic engineer formerly with SEPI Engineering and now with Timmins Group, the Timmins Group; and Mark Forsteri, the director of Wake County Facilities Design and Construction; and Patrick McHugh, the facilities project manager, also with Wake County Facilities Design and Construction. Now, you'll be happy to know that I don't plan to call each of these individuals to testify tonight.
Thank you.
But several of them will, and those who will not will also be available, have been sworn, and will be available to answer any questions that council may have of them. We're here before you tonight requesting two approvals: special use and site plan approval with the modification to waive all requirements pertaining to the reclaimed water line. And since there is significant overlap in the approval criteria for special use and site plan approval, and again, in view of the late hour, our plan is to address both approval requests in a single presentation, with witnesses offering testimony that will support the applicable approval criteria for both the site plan and the special, the special use and the site plan approval. Now, before we get started on testimony, I'd like to introduce three documents into the record at this time. And I believe two of these three records were referenced in Ms. Darden's staff report. The first document is a rendering of the Middle Creek Community Library building. The second document is a rendering of the proposed Middle Creek Library site plan. And the third document is a copy of the Middle Creek School Campus Master Plan dated April 12th, 1999, showing the library as part of the master plan for the site that now encompasses Middle Creek High School. And now, I'd like to call Wake County's first witness, Brian Starkey, to speak to you about the Middle Creek Library, Community Library project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Brian Starkey. I'm principal and landscape architect for the project, principal with OBS Landscape Architects. We are the firm that had submitted the application for the special use and the site plan. As Ken said, we're going to speak to both the special use and the site plan sort of simultaneously. I'm speaking towards three of the seven, speaking about three of the seven criteria identified. The first being whether or not the site plan and the project conforms to the comprehensive plan. Wake County Public Library will conform and does conform to the collection of long-range municipal planning documents and maps that collectively serve as official policy guide for the long-range physical, social, and economic development of Cary. The second one is whether or not the proposed use or development of the land materially endanger public health or safety. In my professional opinion, the Wake County Public Library will not materially endanger the public health or safety. The sixth one, or criteria number six I'm going to speak to, has to do with whether the proposed use is appropriately located with respect to transportation facilities, water, supply, fire, and police protection, waste disposal, similar facilities. The Wake County Public Library is located within the Town of Cary municipal limits, and as such, will be served by town utilities and will receive town fire and police protection. And we don't expect that there be any significant increase in the scope of police or fire services already provided to the area. With regard to the site plan, I'm going to speak to two of the items, two of the criteria, the first being very similar to the first under the special use. the first being very similar to the first under the special use, and that is whether or not the plan complies with applicable requirements of the LDO. Proposed Wake County Library will generally conform to the collection of long-range planning documents that serve as a guide for the development of Town of Cary. And the second one is, does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site? We believe that it does, with access right-in, right-out to Middle Creek Park Drive and access off the existing driveway to the high school. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Maybe later.
Good evening, council. My name is Eric Sowers. I'm architect and principal with Dan Huffman Architecture. We're located at 4417 Laurel Hills Road. I have a bachelor's of architecture and a bachelor's of science and environmental design, and I've been a licensed architect for 12 years. My role in our office for this project is as project manager. I'd like to speak briefly on two of the points for the special use criteria, that being number two, the proposed use or development of the land will not materially endanger the public health or safety. The library has been designed to meet the current North Carolina State Building Code and All Accessibility Code requirements. Prior to the issuing of a building code, it will be reviewed by the Town of Cary Permit and Inspections Department to verify that it does comply with all codes. There will be no hazardous materials or activities that will go on at the facility, and the operation of the facility will not endanger the public health or safety in any way. Then, item number three, as was stated earlier, there actually has been a library planned for this location since the master plan of Middle Creek High School. There was provisions in that master plan for the high school, and again, in 2007, the construction of the library was approved by the citizens of Wake County in a bond referendum. Libraries enhance the community by providing public access to computers, educational opportunities to people of all ages, programming opportunities for children, and access to various research and reading materials. Through all the various programs and resources that this facility would offer, we feel that it is an essential service and an enhancement to the community and surrounding region. Thank you.
This time, Wake County would call Tom Hester to give testimony on criteria, approval criteria number four for the special use permit. As council is aware, state law requires expert testimony on that approval criteria, which involves the question of whether the proposed development will or will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Mr. Hester also will be offering testimony on approval criteria number five for the special use permit, and approval criteria number two and three for the site plan. Mr. Hester, good evening.
Hi.
Could you please provide your name, business address, and qualifications for the town council, please?
Yes, I'm Tom Hester. My firm is Hester &amp; Company. So I'm a self-employed fee appraiser, real estate appraiser. I'm a state-certified general, that's the highest license issued by the state. I'm also a member of a longstanding professional organization, the Appraisal Institute, and I hold the MAI designation from the Appraisal Institute. I've got a North Carolina broker's license, but I spend really all my time in the real estate business, and I've been appraising property in Wake County since 1981, so for about 34 years.
This time, I would tender Mr. Hester as an expert in his field. And Mr. Hester, did you prepare a report in connection with your review of the library project?
I did.
And did you bring copies of that report with you this evening?
I did, yes.
Okay. Where are those copies? This review has actually brought them.
Mr. McHugh brought the copies.
This time, I would tender for inclusion in the record a copy of Mr. Hester's appraisal report, and those are being circulated to council at the moment. Mr. Hester, in your review of the library project, did you consider whether or not the proposed use of the subject property as a public library would have any adverse impacts on the adjoining or abutting properties?
I did.
And in your review of the subject property, did you form an opinion as to whether or not the proposed use of the subject property as a public library would substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting properties?
Yes, I did.
And what is that opinion?
My opinion is that the proposed use would not have any negative effect on adjoining or abutting properties.
Could you please explain for council briefly the basis for that professional opinion?
Well, so the basis for that opinion, and I will try to be brief, but I'm using, I'm not really doing an appraisal of this site per se, but I'm using appraisal tools and methods to analyze this property. Now, technically, the property that is adjoining or abutting, the proposed library site, is a school, and then across the road is a school, and then across Westlake is a subdivision. The closest residential property is in Westlake, and it's about 375 feet away from the property line for the proposed site. Generally speaking, I think when I go to look at a community, look at a neighborhood, and try to figure out what makes a location a good location or a weak location, why do things sell for more in this location versus that location? If I see a library, then I'm generally thinking, a library is an amenity. It's a plus for the neighborhood. And that is my sort of hypothesis here, that this is a plus for the neighborhood, or a neutral, but definitely not a negative. Now, I did go and look at the other existing library sites in North Raleigh and western Wake County. This site is pretty typical of the other existing sites. They are generally adjacent to schools, or parks, or preserved open space as part of a planned development. The density is very low. The floor area ratio on this property is about 5%. That's the building area divided by the land area. A more typical sort of an office use would be 20 or 25%. So this is a low-intensity, low-density kind of use that's typical of the other existing libraries. They're generally 5% to 10% on the floor area ratio. I did always sort of fall back and look at comparable sales. What do things sell for? That's kind of the standard appraisal technique. The other existing libraries that I looked at, they have got some residential properties that are adjacent, but none that have sold recently. I did go back to this particular neighborhood. I looked at some sales transactions adjacent to the Westlake School site to the south, and by comparing transactions, similar houses in the same neighborhood, I find that the properties that are adjacent to the school property sold for not less than the properties, same street, same neighborhood, similar houses, they didn't sell for any less. Actually, in this case, sold for a little more, but really no indication that there is damage by being adjacent to a school property. Now, I think if the school doesn't affect the adjacent properties, then the library very low-intensity use, then the library is not going to affect adjacent properties. And again, the adjacent property here is a school, and in general, I think the library is an amenity for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. I have no more questions. And at this time, Wake County would call Jeff Hokanadl. Good evening, Mr. Hokanadl. Would you provide your name, business address, and qualifications for the council, please?
My name is Jeff Hokanadl. My business address is 5410 Trinity Road in Raleigh. My qualifications are, I was a graduate of NC State undergrad and graduate in civil engineering with an emphasis in transportation. For the last 15 years, I've been doing transportation. I am currently the Transportation Department head for the Timmins Group in Raleigh. I completed the traffic study while working for SEPI Engineering, and I'm here representing that study.
This time, I would tender Mr. Hokanadl as an expert in his field, and I would ask you, Mr. Hokanadl, did you prepare, I think you just testified that you did, a traffic impact analysis for the Middle Creek Community Library Project?
I did. We performed a traffic impact analysis for the library. We looked at the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour of the area. We actually expanded our PM peak hour to include the school's time zone, so we looked from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and 2:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. Based on that study, we found that it did not adversely affect the intersections in the area. We made no recommendations for further congestion improvements.
Now, at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Hokanadl's Traffic Impact Analysis, or TIA, made part of the record in this matter. And I have no further questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, at this point, Wake County would respectfully contend that evidence has been presented through the staff report and staff presentation and the county's witnesses to this point, and the documentary evidence in the record that would allow council to find that each of the approval criteria for the special use permit and the site plan have been met. And at this point, I would like to briefly address the county's request for waiver of all requirements pertaining to the reclaimed water line. I will do that briefly, and then we will end our case with testimony by the county's final witness, Steve Miller, the project civil engineer, on the issue of the waiver request for the reclaimed water line. Mr. Mayor, council members, Wake County is seeking a waiver of the requirement that the county extend approximately 1,300 feet of eight-inch reclaimed water line along the entire 62-acre Middle Creek High School parcel's frontage along Middle Creek Park Avenue. Wake County respectfully requests waiver of this requirement because the Middle Creek Community Library is going to be located on only a small leased 3.7-acre portion of the much larger 62-acre Middle Creek High School parcel, which is owned by the Wake County Board of Education. Requiring Wake County to extend the reclaimed water line along the entire 62-acre high school parcel's frontage along Middle Creek Park Avenue would be highly disproportionate and place an unfair financial burden on the county. And I would submit to you that this is especially true in light of the fact that the evidence will show as follows. The library will not use reclaimed water. Reclaimed water is already available to the library as well as to Middle Creek High School and to the adjacent Middle Creek Park. Construction of the reclaimed water line, as required, would cause substantial disruption to Middle Creek Park Avenue, and consequently, to the traffic flow from Middle Creek High School and the year-round Middle Creek Elementary School that is near the site. And there is an alternate location for a reclaimed water line in this area that would better advance the stated purpose of Cary's Policy Statement 132, Effective Utilization of Reclaimed Water Systems, which is to ensure the continued orderly expansion of and effective utilization of the reclaimed water system. Council members, finally and further, we believe that the evidence will show that the reclaimed water line requirement will divert a significant portion of the budget for the construction of the Middle Creek Community Library away from the primary purpose of the project, which is to provide library services to the citizens of Cary and Wake County pursuant to the 2007 bond referendum. And at this point, I would call Steve Miller to offer testimony.
Good evening. My name is Steve Miller. I'm the project civil engineer and a partner at CLH Design, 400 Regency Forest Drive in Cary. I have a bachelor of science degree from UMass Dartmouth, and have 23 years of site design experience, and have been practicing licensed professional engineer in North Carolina for 19 years. I'm here to present a statement of justification for the waiver of the town's requirement to extend the eight-inch reclaimed water line along Middle Creek Park Avenue frontage of the library site. I have a few points, although Ken stole a lot of my thunder. Ken mentioned a few of these, and I just want to expand on them a little bit, but the construction of a portion of the reclaimed water line would not provide access to any properties that do not already have access to the existing reclaimed water lines. Reclaimed water is currently immediately available to the library site, the high school, and the adjacent Middle Creek Park from existing lines that were installed throughout the school/park campus in 2002 as part of the original construction of the high school. We also submit that if required to extend the reclaimed water line along Middle Creek Avenue, that the line would essentially be an empty stub for the foreseeable future until a town-funded extension of the line further to the west is petitioned and approved. Additionally, the dormant segment of the dead-end pipe will be susceptible to degradation or unintended damage by other utility construction for the coming years while awaiting a future connection. Damage caused to the empty line could likely go unnoticed until a possible future extension is implemented. This would be inconsistent with the stated purpose of Policy 132, to ensure the continued orderly expansion of and effective utilization of the reclaimed water system. Also, the construction of this portion of the dormant line will cause substantial disturbance to Middle Creek Park Avenue and will adversely affect the traffic of the adjacent high school and the year-round elementary school, which rely on Middle Creek Park Avenue for critical vehicular access on a daily basis. Traffic along Westlake Road will also be affected during the connection to the existing reclaimed water line located along the opposite side of Westlake Road. Again, we feel this is inconsistent with the Policy Statement 132. Lastly, we'd like to submit that the location of this reclaimed water line along Middle Creek Park Avenue will not advance Cary's policy regarding the use of reclaimed water, since the properties with the majority of frontage along that road already have access to the reclaimed water, and this extension will add no benefit to those properties. Alternatively, routing the line along Jamison Park Drive would provide the desired loop connection to Westlake Road while also providing direct access to the numerous residential lots and additional access to lots located within connecting cul-de-sacs within Jamison Park subdivision. Routing the reclaimed water line along Jamison Park Drive would advance and be more consistent with the stated purpose of Policy Statement 132. Thank you. I would like to provide testimony about the cost of the reclaimed water line. I performed an estimate of the installation of that line along Middle Creek Park Avenue, and estimate that to be $204,000, which according to the Wake County Library officials would equate to approximately 6.6% of the project budget.
Council members, that concludes Wake County's presentation of evidence and concludes Wake County's case. Again, I would respectfully submit to you that Wake County has presented evidence that would allow the council to reach positive conclusions on each of the required approval criteria for both the special use permit and the site plan approval for the Middle Creek Library Project. Would further submit to you that Wake County has presented evidence that requiring all requirements pertaining to the reclaimed water line, given the unique nature of this project, the location of it, and the cost of the project, would not advance Cary's Policy Statement 132. Simply put, council, every tax dollar that is spent on requirements pertaining to the reclaimed water line would be one less tax dollar that could be spent to provide library books, equipment, and services to the citizens of Cary and Wake County. And it's our respectful contention to council that... that that's what the citizens of Wake County intended in passing the 2007 bond referendum, to provide more public library facilities within the county. Requiring the water line extension will undeniably have the effect of either reducing the scope and amenities of what can be offered at the Middle Creek Community Library or potentially reducing or impacting the, any future library projects remaining from the 2007 bond referendum. So it is Wake County's respectful request that council approve the special use permit and the site plan for the Middle Creek Community Library Project with the modification that all requirements pertaining to the reclaimed water line extension be waived. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's time for other speakers who've been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to speak. And I would ask them to approach the podium one at a time. Anyone to speak in support? Okay, continuing on, I would invite cross-examination of the witnesses who testified in support. No cross-examination? We'll now open the hearing for those who are opposed to the request. Anyone opposed to this request? Seeing no one, call on town staff to add any additional testimony.
The only modification from town standards pertains to the extension of the reclaimed water line. At this time, I would like to invite Jamie Bissonette from Water Resources to present staff observations regarding this modification.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good evening, council. The Middle Creek Library is located in the South reclaimed water service area. Any new development in this service area must comply with Policy 132, which clearly states the development must extend reclaimed water to the development connecting adjoining properties along the edge of the developer's property line and shall be responsible for the full cost of these facilities. Our current reclaimed master plan guides the orderly development of the reclaimed water system. This property is required to install an eight-inch reclaimed water line along their northern frontage along Middle Creek Avenue, which is shown on the blue line here on the slide. I'd like to also point out that the existing system ends at the corner of Middle Creek Park and West Lake Road, approximately right here. We'd also like to point out that the existing reclaimed water infrastructure is in place currently internal to the school along this, this loop route here, looping around the school and connecting down to Optimus Farm Road. The applicant has shown a preliminary design for the reclaimed water line extension along proposed northern library frontage of Middle, along Middle Creek Park Avenue. Construction of this segment of this line would require that the new reclaimed water line crosses West Lake Road, which is an NC DOT main, maintained roadway. NC DOT has historically not allowed an open cut installation under existing pavement, requiring this to be a more expensive bore under the roadway. During the site plan review and just recently in searching for alternatives, staff has observed that since this loop system is interior to the school, that in order to meet the master plan, an extension could be made along this access road and up West Lake Road to connect to the existing system. However, the length is about the same and you'd have to cross West Lake Road and we feel that construction costs would be very similar. In closing, the engineer applicant, or the applicant's engineer, provided a preliminary estimate in the cost of construction of their design segment of reclaimed water line in the amount of $204,000. Payment in lieu by the developers for the cost of construction of an improvement required by the town in cases where this improvement may be impractical or unnecessary in the short term would relieve the town the financial impacts of having to construct a line in the future if it becomes necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant's attorney like to cross-examine? No? Okay. Does anyone have any objections to the competency of any testimony presented this evening? This project? No? All right, now's the time for the deliberative phase of the hearing. Council members, questions? Comments?
Well, I guess I'd like to hear what staff has to say about this alternative through Jameson Park, that that would be more advantageous for our community. The claim was made by the applicant that we'd be better off burning the reclaimed water in a different location altogether.
The Jameson Park development is, doesn't have town water. It does have town sewer.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you state your name?
Glenn Harrell, Water Resources. So the, I would contend that the alternative along the access road along the south of the library site would meet the intent of the master plan to connect points on the west side of West Lake Road to the, there's a loop system through the high school on the west side of West Lake Road. There's a loop system through West Lake Development on the east side of West Lake Road. So this connection would provide a bigger looped system, better to maintain the overall system. And I think the Jameson Park route would be less of a short-term benefit to the town. The master plan calls for a long loop even west of Jameson Park across the creek over to, is that Pierce Olive Road? Oh, here you go. So what I was talking about, the loop system. There's a loop system through Middle Creek Park School. There's a system east of West Lake Road. And this connection, one of the things we're trying to do is, is loop the system together to provide redundancy if you have to shut down lines to maintain lessen the number of people you have to put out of service. So there is an immediate benefit to making this connection. The route that we want to take to make that connection is, we can, you know, look at alternatives to that. The master plan, long-term, would loop over to Pierce Olive Road and back down Optimus Farm Road. Jameson Park loop would potentially maybe do that in the long-term. But I think the short-term benefit to the town would be to try to connect these two sections of existing line.
And you think that'd be about the same cost as doing the previously proposed?
I haven't looked at the cost in detail, but I would guess that it is.
So for someone who might not look at this every day, they already have access to reclaimed water, if they need it, by the system that was put there by the high school? Is that correct?
Correct.
And the elementary school across the street already has access to the reclaimed water as well?
It doesn't, well, it, I guess you could say it does by the existing reclaimed line at the intersection of right there. So there is existing reclaim right there.
So this is really, just to understand, this connection that we're asking them for is really to service other areas downstream? It's really not going to help them at all because they already have access should they need it? It's really about completing the loop and the redundancies for something bigger and planned for the future?
Yes.
It's kind of like the McCrimmon Parkway discussion we had earlier today. You know, I mean, the neighborhood really didn't need to go out to McCrimmon Parkway, but they had that requirement to, to build it out. There's some, it's always interesting to sit here and listen to the arguments that are made for and against the case. And the things that were kind of compelling to me was the fact that it would be about 6% of the budget. That's huge. That if they put in pipes that wouldn't be connected, that they would just degrade there. It'd be kind of like put in too early, right? The disruption to the road, you know, those were things that were compelling to me. What wasn't compelling to me was the argument that the 2007 bond people didn't vote for this. Because in the end, we're pursuing a certain standard for our community and that standard includes this reclaimed water network. And if Wake County residents don't pay for this as part of their construction, then that falls on the burden of the citizens of CARRY. It doesn't go away and it doesn't go to some, you know, amorphous organization called the Town of CARRY. It is the citizens of CARRY who pick up the budget and, you know, and pick up the cost of this. So it comes back to that same question. Is it the citizens of CARRY that pick up the cost of the, you know, required network around a development? Or is it the developer? And that's what we have to decide. And do we have some special exemption when it's another public organization that's coming and requesting this exemption? And I don't know, because I can tell you there'd be a bunch of citizens who'd say, I'm a Wake County citizen, I'm a CARRY citizen, and I want the Wake County budget to pick this up because it's a Wake County project, not a Town of CARRY project. So it's tough. It's a tough decision, but that, that argument doesn't resonate with me as much as there might be a better route. These, if we put these pipes in prematurely, they might degrade. I'd rather, if they can't, I mean, I see this connection being an immediate benefit, but if it wasn't for that, I would say maybe we want a payment in lieu instead of putting in a discontinued pipe.
And on that point, could I ask Mr. Harrell come back? I'm sorry you got away. And the question I want to ask is, if that pipe were there and it completed that loop, would it sit there dry? Or would it actually have water in it?
The, the discussion about the dry pipe would have been if the alignment on the site plan along Middle Creek Park, if it were installed there, it would not be dry. It would be, it wouldn't necessarily be dry. It could be pressurized with water, reclaimed water. There may not be a lot of flow through the line. You'd have to blow it off to keep it cleaned out. But if the route along the entrance road to connect these two existing systems, that alignment instead of along Middle Creek Park Drive, then it would be a very active part of the system.
We do, just to make a quick point on what you were saying. There are times when the town provides waivers for like Wake County schools, right? So I hear what you're saying. We have a precedent set for times when we do help out and transportation improvement. So there are, we have set, I guess, the standard that when it's possible, we do make it a little bit easier for schools to go in, and this would be in line with that. Should, should council decide.
I agree. I just, it's not, I just don't want citizens out there thinking, yeah, you know, don't make Wake County pay for this, you know? Make the Town of CARRY pay for it. But people have to recognize that it's
They're the same people.
It's the same people. It's, or it's a different group of people, but it's people who are paying for this.
First, I'd say this is a poster child case for wanting to see just the requested waiver on a project. I, I can't help but think if the school system didn't have to pay for all of this, they might be able to buy a water line. Although it is good to know that the library will not negatively impact the school's property value. Kind of surprised we had to do a study for that. But I kind of tend to agree with, I guess, both of you all. I mean, we look for opportunities to help the school system when we can. I think that's kind of what, you know, I mean, you're definitely giving a good argument for for and against, but
I just think we need to consider all the points.
Yeah, I, I kind of lean towards, I, I just, I do not see this water line benefiting the school in any way or the library in any way. I see it benefiting the surrounding areas. So I just think when there's an opportunity to help, you know, let's do what we can to help. Again, I don't know what this costs.
What is the benefit of putting in this extra line? I'm sorry, Glenn. What is the benefit of putting in this extra line? Is it so that you have connectivity? So you have two, a circular route? So that if one, one part of the pipe broke down, you still had access to reclaimed water from a different route?
Yes, that's, it certainly aids in that. It also creates a loop system. So the reclaimed water going through the network is, is, if there's a lot of demand in one area, you have more routes for that reclaimed water to get from the source to the high-demand areas. So it helps with that. But yeah, I guess the biggest benefit in the short term would be if you had to put a section out of service, you could put less people out of, out of service while you were maintaining that section of line.
Okay, so of the, I understand that going under West Lake Road is extremely expensive because of the boring. How much of the rest of that segment, that piece aside in the black lines that you showed us, how much of that goes along the frontage of this library?
Okay. So the, the end of the existing system, that is, the library is right in this little corner right here.
Okay, so it is the frontage of the library?
Yes.
Okay.
So this section would be along the southern boundary of the library site, along that access road between that and Tennis Courts. And then West Lake Road would get it up to the existing system here to complete that loop.
What percentage of the cost do you think is the boring under the road? That's described as an expensive part?
I'd honestly be surprised if the number that was quoted would get this project built. A good portion of that number would be what it would take to get under West Lake Road.
Okay.
But I haven't looked at the, the cost in detail. They just seem low when I
Okay, all right.
Does anyone have any more questions? Right, I'm going to make a motion to approve this special use when the mayor is ready for that.
If we're ready for motions, we'll close the public comment portion and entertain a motion. Ms. Bush?
Okay, I'll make a motion to, for the reasons discussed, that we approve the request for a special use made by the applicant as the request meets all the approval criteria of the Section 3.8.3 of the LDO.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion?
If we do this, I'd like for somebody to quantify the amount of money that we've waived. And I'd like it to be acknowledged that this is
Well, this one is just the special use.
Oh, this is just special use, okay. All right, I'll approve that.
But I'm going to agree with you when it's your turn. Okay, we have
I wanted to clarify that. We're not talking about reclaimed water yet.
She was in a sprint.
So we have a motion to approve the special use and second and discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Would you like to do it since you're so
No, you can go ahead and do it.
All right, see if I can get it the way you'd like it. Make, for the reasons discussed, I motion, make a motion that we approve the modification request made by the applicant as the request meets all the approval criteria, the applicable sections of the LDO, with the recognition that the, I don't know, estimation of this cost, of the fee that is being waived is like estimated at $204,000.
It's going to be more and I'd like, I'd like an updated estimate. I'd like somebody to figure out generally what that is. Because, nope.
No, not now.
At some point, but the problem is, is that this is a gift to Wake County from the Town of CARRY by waiving this. This is a gift to Wake County. And I want it to be acknowledged that we have forfeited one of our standards for the sake of saving Wake County money for the pursuit of this library, which is, which is a noble thing to do. But we have to acknowledge the amount of money that we put into Wake County services. This is a contribution on behalf of the town and I want it fully recognized. So that's, that is my point.
So how would you like me to?
I think that Mr. Harrell or Mr. Brown could report back to you on that in another fashion outside of the context.
It doesn't have to be It doesn't have to be-
I don't want to spend any money to find out how much money we're not going to spend.
It's not, he's not going to, no, he's waving his hands. I think that would be insignificant. Yeah.
Okay.
He just, he just needs to look at it. I mean, he's an expert.
Well, we don't expect a full-page report on it.
Right. We don't need a booklet.
Okay, so that was my motion.
Sorry for the late hour, but we had a motion, but I don't remember the second.
We didn't have a second.
We went right into discussion. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion?
Just to be consistent with the way I voted on the first item several hours ago, seems like several days ago, I'm going to have to vote no on this one also. I, I don't, I don't want to waive the payment in lieu.
Yeah.
I can, I do appreciate that. I think that, for me, it's a bit of a different beast, if you will, because last time it was a private developer, this time it's a public entity that serves a larger community, and because there's a precedent, because we do this quite a bit with all the schools where we waive the transportation fees and all the others. So I think it's keeping to a particular precedent. You're going to vote against your own-
But no, 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 but I wanted to, I don't want, I don't want Wake County to go forward thinking that every time they come to us, there's now a precedent that we're going to waive-
No, I understand.
-a transportation fee or a water line fee.
I guess my, then my question would be, in 2007, when the bond was approved by the voters, I'm sure that was, there was planning before then in '05, '06 for library, whatever, did the school system know that this would be a requirement back, way back then?
I'm seeing head shake, no.
Do we even have the water reclaim system way back then over here?
Oh, that's a good question.
That's a good question. I can't remember when it came in.
Tim's nodding his head.
It's around that time.
All right. Here we go.
I can only disappoint now.
Who are you? Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Whew. What? He was sworn in.
What was the question?
Oh.
When the planning and everything was begun to put this library as part of the bond project, did we have reclaimed water system in this?
We've had reclaimed water down there since 2002.
Okay. So this was something that would have been known on the front end and could have, would they have known they were required to do this?
I can't say that with certainty. Reclaimed water has been heavily integrated with the whole park and school development down there for many years, though.
Right, and the school was built in 2000 and?
2002.
And it has reclaimed water, so Wake County already was aware that-
Not a surprise.
Okay.
And separately, this has been brought up a few times, but just to point out, there are some fees that by law, we are not allowed to charge the Wake County school system. We are not actually waiving those fees. We are not allowed to charge those.
Ah, okay.
Such as? The transportation fees you were talking about.
Oh, I thought we were being nice.
Well, we're still being nice.
Okay, so we, so we have a, we have a motion in a second. We've had discussion, and staff is going to get back to us without spending any, any money with information about how much of a gift this really was. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one.
Very lackluster five.
Yeah, really, really quiet five. And, I believe this, and I'm, I'm sorry.
One more motion, please.
One more motion, site plan.
Oh, oh, site.
That's right.
Sorry. Special use modification, site plan. For the reasons discussed, I made that we approve the proposed site plan with the conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forward in Section 3.9 I of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address all the remaining DRC comments on the master plan submitted.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Come on.
Second.
We're just tired.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, you guys-
Okay, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, and thank you all for waiting to this late hour until we made a decision. There is no closed session this evening, so we've completed our order of business on the agenda. I would entertain a motion-
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Visit the Town of Keri website at townofkeri.org.